All the meeting to order for the afternoon of September 28th, 2021 will begin, if you're able to stand, please join us with a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by Pastor Theodores Young, Light of the World Church pastor and council member Arenas will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. It's my honor to introduce Pastor Theodores Young, who will be leading our invocation today. Pastor Young joins us from the Light of the World Church in District Eight, where she has held many positions such as a Sunday schoolteacher, choir director, family activity coordinator, and more. Quite the extraordinary. Pastor Young has served as co-pastor at Light of the Church for 13 years alongside her sister, Pastor Thedra Price, since the passing of their late father Bishop Price. Light of the World gives out free lunches twice a month to residents in need. They also hold regular gatherings that are called 24/7 Women of Faith, and it's a safe space for women to gather for prayer and build community. In 2009, Pastor Young lost her youngest son, Isaac, in a tragic car accident, but she has found a renewed passion and zeal for life. Despite tragedy and loss, Pastor Young continues to be a beacon of hope to inspire everyone who's experienced loss, pain, and grief to enjoy the life God has given them. She has a heart to serve the community by participating in so much and offering us so much. And I want to just recognize some of the ladies that are here today, co-pastor Thedra Price, Mrs. Price, their mother, missionary McBride, Ms. Velisha, and Ms. Danisha Cooper. Thank you for all for coming.
Thank you for allowing me to do the invocation of today. And as we, I wanted to talk today and pray at the same time about that we have compassion and that our vision, whatever we stand forth or put forth today, that it will be successful and knowing that you are powerful enough to accomplish anything that you have set before you, no matter what the challenges are. And I wanted just to read to you and during the prayer, and we're going to start with our prayer right now. Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, forgive us of our sins. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this wonderful day to be here, to gather, to hear, to accomplish all the issues that we have set forth and the challenges that you have put on our plate. But Lord, you know that we can handle these things. Lord, I thank you for all the desires and all those mouths that are going to speak forth on today. Lord, let them know that they are powerful and they are anointed. In your word, it says, "The problem," it says in Habakkuk two, to look around at Habakkuk verses two, verse two, let me get that for you. It says, "Make right the vision and make it plain, and they shall run and shall not faint." And I want you to know, whatever vision that we establish today, that God has appointed, that it shall run, and that no matter what challenges that we have today, remember that, remember that the God that you serve, the God that you know, whatever God that you serve, that you are enough, that you are powerful, and that you can make anything happen in this city. This great city belongs to him. We give him honor. We honor him in prayer. I thank God for all the blessings that he's going to do. I promote blessings on everyone in this place in the name of Jesus, where we give you praise and honor. So that everything that we do today, it shall be accomplished in Jesus' name. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pastor Young. Thank you for joining us. All right. We have three ceremonial items today. First, ask Councilmember Carrasco to join me at the podium. We're going to recognize and proclaim National Preparedness Month.
Good morning. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Magdalena Carrasco. I represent the East Side of San Jose District Five. Since the tragedy on September 11th, 2001, the United States government has chosen September as National Preparedness Month to encourage all citizens to make their own survival preparations. The theme of this year's National Preparedness Month is Prepare to Protect. By preparing for disasters now, we are taking steps to protect everyone you love. As we battle two crises simultaneously, the COVID-19 pandemic and global climate change, we can be proactive in addressing the threats posed by global climate change. We can leverage and we can braid local, state, and federal resources. And it's not a matter of if, it is a matter of when. We will see the next citywide emergency, and it's imperative that we prepare for the next pandemic, the next flood, fire, storm, the next earthquake, or power outage. And in order to protect our most vulnerable communities, such as those that live and make up the East Side of San Jose, we need to invest in those communities in order to reinforce some of the oldest existing infrastructures. Embedded in this conversation is an important understanding. We often speak about emergencies on a grand scale, some sort of catastrophic calamity. But it's important to also recognize the singularity of emergencies. And I'm referring to death of a family, a medical emergency, an ICE raid that strips a parent from his daughter. These are all events that also require foresight and preparation. It's important to be present for those conversations and understand that we are all too often unprepared for them, especially in our Latino community. As climate change continues to devastate our planet, the realities of emergencies become that much more commonplace. Many of my residents live in or along fire evacuation zones, emphasizing the need to be connected to resources and support so that they may prepare for a rapid evacuation and a safe return to their home. And San Jose is sandwiched between the San Andreas and the Hayward faults, both of which are capable of producing devastating earthquakes. We know we are long overdue for one, and we are all terrified of the big one. That's why it's important that we build that capacity. Something as simple as chatting with your neighbor and learning that they have an elderly parent living with them. Scouting your neighborhood for potential convening points. Joining your neighborhood association or even starting one. Taking a minute to locate your home's gas line and understanding how to shut it off. Purchasing a travel crate for your furry little friends. Keeping important documents in a safe and accessible place and preparing an emergency plan paired with an emergency go-bag. Helping lead these capacity building efforts are Captain Ryan Ira and Ben Narango with our San Jose Fire Department, who run the San Jose Fire Explorers Program. The program helps young adults prepare for a rewarding career in fire service and classroom training and hands-on lessons to learn both firefighting techniques, lessons, and leadership skills. So it's with great honor that we're able to proclaim this month as National Preparedness Month. And I'm happy to have with us here Captain Ira and Ben Narango. And Mayor, if you don't mind, presenting the proclamation. And I'd like to ask, is it Ben? Are you going to come up here and talk to us about some of the great stuff that you have? Thank you so much.
Mayor Liccardo, Councilman Carrasco, thank you for this great honor. And I can't think of a better group to give this honor to. In the city of San Jose, the Fire Explorers have been the face of the city of San Jose and the Fire Department. Before I came here, I was looking through all the pictures, all the events that we've gone to, and they've made a difference. I could tell you the Fire Explorers here have made a difference here by preparing the citizens of San Jose. Just thinking, looking at the different people here at different districts. I know they've been to Chappy Jones, a Dev Davis district, to go help out with the senior walk, doing blood pressures, sending out information. Recently, we handed out 400 backpacks to kids in need downtown in Raul Paralisis District. And then also, you've seen them out there. I know I bring you out there every time, take a picture with them. They've been there to Earth Day, National Night Out. And out there, they've demonstrated CPR to hundreds of citizens. Also, pet CPR to hundreds of citizens. We hand out flyers, and you know, they've done a great job.
Oh, sorry.
They do a great job. I know I've been involved, me and Captain Ira have been involved with the Fire Explorers for over a decade. And some of the kids here, this program builds great life skills, great leadership skills. In fact, some of the former Fire Explorers I'm currently working with right now, they're San Jose firefighters. And I keep in touch with some of them. Some of them have gone on to have careers in other fire departments. In fact, one former Fire Explorer, he just got recognized by the president. He went to the White House a couple of months ago, Gustavo Gutierrez. And he used to be a former Fire Explorer. So even my son, I got involved because of my son, and I know it's been great, and it really formed those skills for him. So thanks to Chief Sapian for helping out this program, fostering this program. I think it's a great program. We also brought in an emergency bag to demonstrate what you need to have when you go out there. Just like Councilman Carrasco said, we need to be prepared. We never know what's going to happen. We've had floods here. We know wildland season's still going on. So when you need to go, you need to go right away. So we prepared a bag here, some of the things that you need to have. So those are my personal effects, like you need to change your clothes. I have a toolkit in there. And we recommend that everyone has three gallons of water per person and enough food for you to survive for three days. Because if there is a big event, the city's going to be overwhelmed. And so you need to, this is to help you out and your family. If you have any medications, make sure you have some in there. I also have a pillow, some blankets, towels, just whatever you need. If you have pets, or you have special needs or disability with someone in your family, just make sure that you take care. Have all the proper documentation in that bag and ready to go. The biggest challenge is finding a place to store this and having, but if you pre-plan, you know, if you don't plan, you plan to fail, is one of the things I've learned. I'll end it here. I know we only have a few minutes. Thanks again. This is a great honor to be part of this program. It's a great honor to be a San Jose firefighter and serve the citizens here. And this is your future here. This is your future Fire Department and the people that will be serving you in the future. Thank you to Captain Ira for leading this group. And thank you.
Thanks to our Fire Explorers and to our Fire Department. It's always there in the critical moments for our residents. All right, next up, Councilmember Davis. We've got a 25th birthday to celebrate. The Health Trust, I don't get to celebrate 25th birthdays anymore, so we got to celebrate other people's 25th birthdays.
Good afternoon. The Health Trust is a nonprofit organization dedicated to improving our community's access to health and wellness. In the last two decades, the Health Trust has emerged as a funder, provider, and advocate of health services and education in our community. During the pandemic, they worked tirelessly to deliver meals to our most vulnerable populations and continue to provide case management services to formerly unhoused individuals and those living with chronic diseases. This summer, I worked with the Health Trust to inform city residents and stakeholders about a great program called Blue Zones. Blue Zones is a health initiative that focuses on improving residents' wellness by making healthy food more accessible and strengthening social connections. Together, Blue Zones and the Health Trust can improve the quality of life for San Jose residents. Today, the Health Trust celebrates 25 years of community service and dedication to health equity. They are an asset to our city, and I am honored to present them with this commendation. I now invite Michelle Liu, CEO of the Health Trust, to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Davis, Mayor Liccardo, and members of the City Council. We are so honored to be celebrating the Health Trust's 25th anniversary this year in partnership with the city. We could not do this work without the city. In the last 18 months during the pandemic, my colleagues, Daphne and Barbara and the team, have done a heroic job of delivering more than 600% more Meals on Wheels to homebound residents in San Jose and Silicon Valley. I'm so glad that they're here on behalf of all of us at the Health Trust. We hope city council members and your constituents, you'll join us on October 6th for our 25th anniversary virtual celebration. It's free to attend. More details at healthtrust.org. Thanks again.
All right, Councilmember Jimenez will be helping us recognize and commend the Project Hope Youth ambassadors. And are ambassadors here?
There you are.
Fantastic. All right. Welcome.
And I realize that none of us do it alone. And so if there's any city staff that work with Project Hope who want to come down, we'd love to have you down here as well. So up here we have Jessica. I think Julie isn't able to be here. Carolina. I think Julie isn't able to be here, Carolina. And then we also have Sammy. And so as the mayor said, very excited to give commendations to the Project Youth Ambassadors who served the Roundtable area. And if you don't know much about the Roundtable area, it's in District 2, as you can imagine. The Roundtable neighborhood in District 2 is a vibrant and diverse community that has historically been underserved. Since taking office, my team and I have been committed to bringing equity of service and resources to this area. One of my first budget requests as a council member, in fact, was for the establishment of the city's second Project Hope in the Roundtable neighborhood, following the lead of Vice Mayor Chappy Jones in the Cadillac neighborhood. Over the last four years, the Roundtable Neighborhood Association, in collaboration with Project Hope and my office, has established a neighborhood association, organized monthly cleanups, sponsored events, and established relationships with the city departments, including the San Jose Police Department, which is very important. Roundtable has seen many successes over the last several years. And one of those is the completion of the Project Hope Ambassador's program by four neighborhood youth. The Project Hope Youth Ambassador Program serves to train and educate future leaders in San Jose by enhancing skills in community organizing, event planning, career exploration, and employment preparation and opportunities. Youth ambassadors work to engage underserved communities, which in this case is their own, and connect them to valuable resources while learning about local government, future employment opportunities, and acquire an important job skills. The ambassadors from the Roundtable Neighborhood Association learned firsthand about the issues faced by their community and, most importantly, how to work collaboratively with and navigate local government and bring city resources to assist their community's needs. The youth focused on enhancing their communication and networking skills through tabling, cabin seating, knock and talks, and even event planning, informational material design, data entry, litter pickup dumpster days, and other community events and services. The Roundtable ambassadors are all students at Oak Grove High School, which is also in District 2, and have all shown exemplary leadership and commitment to their neighborhood and neighbors. These four youth have collectively contributed over 700 hours. I'll say that again. They've collectively contributed over 700 hours of their time to improve their community. It is with great honor that I present commendations to Jessica Marquez, Julie Vallejo Trejo, who isn't here today, Carolina Castillo Solano, and Sammy Lee for their admirable dedication and leadership. And I'm certainly very positive that these youth have left a lasting impression on their neighborhood, Roundtable neighborhood, and that they really are the future leaders of our city. So with that being said, let's give them a round of applause. And I also want to call up Jessica. She's going to share a few words.
My name is Jessica Marquez. I am 17 years old. My experience with Project Hope was fun, even though we would have our meetings through Zoom. Before being a youth ambassador with Project Hope, my mom would volunteer, and she would also take me to litter pickups. She would also join the meetings. Once I became a youth ambassador, at first, I was nervous, shy, excited. But once we had our first meeting, I didn't know what to expect. Within time, this program took me out of my comfort zone. I got to meet new people, learn about the different careers we had out in the world. I also got to learn the variety of different programs we had offered to the community. This inspired me to teach families to learn what to ask for and give them a voice. I would like to thank Project Hope and everyone who was involved for helping me make a difference in my community. Thank you.
Okay, on to orders of the day. There are a few changes. First is a new item 2.17. That's a request for travel for me to go to Dayton, Ohio. That requires a determination of a two-thirds vote. So if more than one-third of you object, then my wife's going to make me paint my porch that Saturday. I'd much rather go to Dayton. So please vote for that. Councilmember Cohen is requesting deferral of item 7.2, which relates to the alignment of City Council policy priority 18, which is smoke-free housing. And staff's requesting deferral of three weeks on item 2.9, which is a conditional summary vacation declaration of surplus and sale of a portion of North Almaden Boulevard. Are there any other changes to the printed agenda? Councilmember Frost.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a change. I was just curious on the reasoning for the request of the deferral of 7.2. I did see the law foundation's letter. I don't know if it was in line with that.
Yeah, I mean, there's been several issues, I think, that need to be resolved and a number of questions. I think there's a number of areas that I think need improvement on it that I think need a few more weeks before we bring it back and discuss as a council.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other changes? Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Let's vote. That's unanimous. All right, on to the closed session report, Nora.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have anything to report out of closed session today.
All right, next up is the consent calendar. Any items that council would like to pull from consent? Councilmember Davis.
Items 2.3 and 2.6, please.
Okay. Any other items to be pulled? All right, let's go first to item 2.3. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm speaking specifically about 2.3E, which is the August 11th Rules and Open Government Committee Meeting Minutes. In that meeting, I put forward a memo to bring to the full body to oppose SB 9 and SB 10 for us to take an opposition position. Both of those pieces of legislation make changes to what were traditionally local land use processes. And we had not been briefed on these items or recommended a position. And now they've both been signed into law. That did not go out of Rules Committee. It was, my motion was not seconded. So I would like to request that we, first of all, receive a presentation to the full council about the implications of these two new laws for our city and our land use processes. And I would like, let me say a little bit first about SB 10 before I make my second recommendation. SB 10 would allow up to 10 times more density near transit. And cities can choose whether or not to opt in to implement this law. And for such a drastic last land use change, I think we need to let the voters weigh in before we take action. So I would like to direct staff to bring a potential ballot measure to the council regarding the implementation of SB 10 that could be placed on either the June or the November 2022 ballots. And those would be my two recommendations. So a presentation about the implications of SB 9 and 10, and then a potential ballot measure. So that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. With regard to bringing a ballot measure, typically that would be something that would go through Rules Committee as well and give us a chance to analyze and discuss it here on the council. I'm not prepared right now to discuss that. But I'm certainly happy to do so. I'm just, I don't think any of us have noticed. So is there a means by which we could set this for discussion?
Sure, to discuss a potential ballot measure. Yes.
Great. Okay, any comments on this item? Councilmember, you know, I realize we've got members of the public who want to speak, I assume, on this item. Is that right?
So those people on Zoom, this is just to talk about 2.3, not the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay, so Councilmember Frost, sorry if we go to the public first. All right, we are only taking comment on this specific item. Item 2.3E, I believe, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, here we go.
Claire Beekman.
Hi, good afternoon. Claire Beekman, thank you, man, for letting me notice and the hands raised for public comment or consent calendar items that have been pulled. Thanks a lot. I simply wanted to offer, for this item, that Dev Davis offers some interesting ideas in early August about this issue. And I think it was Councilperson Peralas who also offered some very interesting clarifications of concerns of Councilperson Davis. Good luck how we can work on this issue together and what can be solved in coordinated efforts. Thank you.
Paul Soto.
Yes, good afternoon, Council. Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I can appreciate the position that Councilwoman Davis is taking on this item. And I welcome that conversation. However, I don't know if I got to do a motion or whatever, but I would like that conversation to be balanced. And the only way that we can do that is that if someone from the public, myself, to give a presentation on the redlining policies and really, why, why is this? Why was this implemented? What problem is it trying to remedy? Okay, and I think that when we had that conversation and we centered that within the context of this conversation, then I think, of course, it's going to lead to a whole other ball of wax. But let's do one thing at a time. But to have this conversation and not, and just completely neglect the map 1937, is, I think, it would be reckless. It would be irresponsible. And it would be completely, it would be a dereliction. It would be a dereliction of your duty to the citizens to not center that conversation in terms of the redlining and all of the associated systems that stemmed from that, which manifested in the police department, in the school system, in the economic system. People couldn't have jobs with the city or the county until the 1970s. And I'm talking late 70s, early 80s. That's when you could get a job. And all of it stems from those policies that these two bills were designed to alleviate. SV at Home doesn't talk about it. Latino coalitions, they don't talk about none of this stuff. I mean, directly, head-on. And so this is what I'm questioning, I'm asking for. You can get someone else. But have somebody within the context of this conversation talk about redlining. Thank you.
Buford Barr.
Yes, yes. I'd like to thank Councilperson Davis for bringing this matter up. And as a citizen, I would like to ask the council to not opt in to Senate Bill 10. 10 and 9 were passed with very little public discussion and signed by the governor. I'd also like to ask the council to pass a resolution that supports the proposed statewide ballot to restore local control over zoning and land use. I think that's our prerogative. I'd also like to ask the council to please reject the General Plan Task Force recommendation that'll be on your desk sometime before December, I think, that eliminates single-family zoning in all of San Jose. Please, please defeat that. Thank you very much for your time.
Sandra.
Yes, thank you very much. First, I want to thank you for taking the time this morning to recognize these important community groups and to the individuals. Thank you to the individuals that were honored as well for serving the community. I would like to support Councilwoman Davis's proposal, motion. SB 10 was passed. It has already had lawsuits filed. We ask that you opt out of SB 10. We do ask that you support the local control initiative that is going forward. And we will be sending you information on that. The council needs to take a position and needs to listen to the community. So again, thank you for honoring people this morning and this afternoon. And thank you for seriously taking this study and getting informed on these very controversial bills that have passed.
Tobin Gilman.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I want to join the echo of calls of appreciation to Councilmember Davis for bringing this issue of local control up to the Rules Committee back in August and to the council today. I actually attended the Rules Committee meeting back in August when this memo was presented. And I listened to the discussion among the Rules Committee members. And I do want to make a comment that I respectfully disagree with a comment that Councilmember Peralas made, essentially that the council doesn't need local control over land use decisions because State Senator Cortez represents our area in Sacramento. I'm sorry, but really, this is something that I'm looking to you as a city council to take control of, not to punt to Sacramento. And I enthusiastically support the two recommendations that Councilmember Davis has made today. And I encourage you all to endorse that and move those two ideas forward. Just one other comment on opportunity housing. It's my understanding as well that it's supposed to be coming before the council in December. I think that, given that the Planning Department and the Housing Department are way understaffed and way behind on their deliverables, coupled with the fact that we have just, we're about to begin the Senate Bill 9 experiment, I would say, don't take it up in December. Don't take it up next year. Don't take it up the year after that or the year after that. Let's see how SB 9 plays out. And let's not contaminate the Petri dish any further than it already is. Thank you.
Brenda Domon.
Hi, yes, thank you for letting me speak. I too support Councilmember Davis's resolution today and encourage the council to pass it. I encourage you to endorse local control with the new ballot measure that's coming up. I encourage all elected officials to endorse it. Council should oppose the coming General Plan Task Force recommendation to study opportunity housing and the implications eliminating single-family home zoning. I feel that it's unnecessary to study due to the inadequate planning resources and known impact of the new state legislation and backlog of Planning and Housing Department incompleted deliverables. Thank you for your time today.
My final speaker is Tessa Woodman-C.
Thank you. Okay, this is Tessa Woodman-C. Please don't turn off my hand, Toby, because I put it up there for a reason. Anyway, getting back to the issue at hand, a literal hand of Dev Davis, you know, saying that we need local control. Thank you, Dev Davis. However, we have been fighting with you over the local control of our neighborhood. You and your council members have prioritized jobs over housing. And you know, the issue that we have to fight in our community is addressing our issues, our crises. And we do have a housing crisis. We have a climate crisis. Those are the truth. That's true. And the thing is, everything we do has to address our climate crisis, really, and our housing crisis. Because our housing crisis is going to be exacerbated from climate refugees that are all over the world. They say a billion people are going to be looking for homes, not thousands that people have been talking about. We're talking about a billion people by 2050 or even earlier, 2020, from the way things are going, 2030. Okay, so when I'm saying local control, I spoke to a woman in Alameda. She says Alameda, the city of Alameda, decides what they want in their neighborhood. We want that decision too. Yet Dev Davis says, no, we want jobs in your neighborhood. We want a hotel in your neighborhood. So yes, I want local control. Yes, I go for that. But that's what we want in our neighborhood. And Dev Davis and your council has said jobs are more important than housing. And that is wrong, because jobs have to go away. We are in a climate crisis. We need to learn to be self-sufficient and be able to live without a job, without money, to grow our own food. These are self-sufficiency issues. Like we're talking about- These are self-sufficiency issues, like we're talking about emergency preparedness that Ms. Roscoe was talking about very well. And these are our issues, we have to prepare. And you're not allowing us to choose what we want in our neighborhood. So yes, I want that on the bill. We want to choose what we want in our neighborhood and have that be the truth.
Back to the council.
Okay, back to the council. Councilor Frost.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the direction here, because it sounds like you helped amend it, Mayor. So first, Councilmember Davis, it's to have staff bring back a presentation on, was it both SB 10 and SB 9?
Yes, that's correct.
And then the second part, can you maybe describe how it was amended now?
For staff to give us an evaluation so we can discuss a potential ballot measure about the implementation of SB 10.
Okay. If you are willing to bifurcate those, I can't support the second ask, at least definitely not yet. I think I support the first part of it. I do think that that's worthwhile, that we have a discussion. I'm hoping staff was planning for that anyways. So if you can bifurcate that, I'm happy to support the first half of it.
They're both about a discussion.
Yeah, I'm happy to have the first discussion. I think it's way too soon to give any indication that we'd want to go to the ballot for either of these, and so especially SB 10, which we have a discretion on. So I can't support that, I don't want to give that indication. So I'd rather have the discussion first. And I think this could be presented at Rules if need be, if you would like to present it on the ballot. But I just think it's too soon for that first thing. So if you can bifurcate it, I'm happy to support the first half.
I'll wait to see what my colleagues think.
That's it, thanks.
Okay. Councilor Sparsa.
Thank you. I was gonna suggest the same thing of bifurcating it. I agree, I think that we could benefit from having a discussion, whether it's a study session or a presentation on SB 9 and 10. I think cities throughout the state are assessing and also assessing what it means for our work plan at the city. And I actually had a question for Lee or Roslin on that, on, did we, because I think this came up in committee, are we already going to have a presentation or was it an info memo?
Oh, well, I was gonna say, we were planning on an information memo, but we can certainly do a, bring it to council and have a conversation about SB 9 and 10 as well.
Okay, yeah, because I think it would be fruitful to have an in-depth discussion in terms of what it means for the work plan, what this, I think some work needs to go into it before it necessarily comes to a full presentation or a potential study session or a part of a study session, and that was my question. So that'll come back to us, if this approved.
Yeah, so we would, we could agendize for a discussion, the implications of SB 9 and 10.
Would that come to council or study session, which is what I'm trying to get at?
Oh, I think it would be coming to a council meeting. And then if you want to have, what, we could do a study session, it's completely up to you.
And when is our next study session? Well, we have one this week, yes. Thanks for the reminder, but I mean, yeah. The one after that.
Yeah, there's one, I think, in later October. Gloria, do you have the date?
Yeah, because I think there is one in the week of October, what is that, 11th, right?
Yeah, releasing that date, I think there's one later.
There is one later, let me look really quick.
My personal preference would be to have it incorporated into a study session. So that's my preference. Likewise, I think it's premature to go straight to a discussion of a ballot measure on SB 10. I think that there's definitely some more work to do on this, and I actually would welcome a study session on this. I think there's a lot of question marks on this. And I had another question, this is a question for the city attorney, are we even able to vote on a discussion of a potential ballot measure today, considering the item is just approving minutes?
Good question, thank you, council member. If the council decides that they want to have a future discussion, here you could do that, or it could go back through the process, but you could have that decision today to ask the council member, that's something you can.
Oops, microphone, that way.
Okay, I'm sorry. That is something you can have the city manager bring back to you if you decide you want to have that.
Okay, yeah, I think for me personally, all signs point to having a study session and a good discussion and giving staff some time to do an assessment, because I do think this involves a lot of work that's on our staff. Actually, let me clarify, SB 9 and 10 require a lot of work on our staff to come and make a presentation to us. So my preference would be to have that incorporated into a study session, and I couldn't support a ballot measure discussion at this time. I think that a study session would be a really good precursor to a ballot measure discussion. Those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jones.
Actually, Councilmember Sparsa said everything I was gonna say, so just rewind the tape. Yes, I had the expectation that staff was gonna come back with a report, and so I'm glad to hear that, you know, we're either gonna have a study session or come back to council. As far as SB 10 is concerned, you know, I'm a real process guy, and, you know, it should go through the normal process of going through rules, having rules discussed, debated, vote on it, and then move it forward to council. I also feel like there's not enough information that we have. We haven't had an opportunity to do an in-depth analysis on SB 10 to really make a decision right now in terms of how we want to move forward. So, and then I just had one other point I wanted to make, too. I guess procedurally, we have the ability to pull something off of minutes and discuss it and give direction, but as a practical matter, I don't feel that that's a road that we should go down, because there's a lot of items in the minutes from the different committees, and if they didn't, you know, you can have multiple bites at the apple, but should you? Because there are things that are voted down in committee, and then if it goes to council and you pull it off of the minutes and, again, and I have another bite at the apple, you have the right to do it, but I don't know if that's the most efficient way to go about it. So that's the points I want to make.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. No? Okay. Councilmember Cohen?
Well, now you can rewind what Vice Mayor Jones said, because that's pretty much what I was gonna say. Yeah, I was gonna ask the question that Councilmember Sparsa asked about whether it's appropriate to use the minutes to sort of have a discussion that we hadn't been sort of agendized to have, because I'm not, I don't think we had enough background information to make a decision about what's, what's the right, you know, about this topic. So I actually am all in favor of having a discussion. I think it's really, you know, it's really important that we have the discussion about the effects of this legislation on our city, no doubt, but going any further than that in this discussion right now, I think is inappropriate. And so bifurcating this and voting on saying, asking for that discussion is fine with me, but I don't want to say anything more in that statement at this point. But I'm a little uncomfortable having any vote at this point. I think it's, I think it's expected that we'll have this discussion in the future, but, you know, this item on the agenda is approving minutes. I'm not sure I'm comfortable even having a vote on anything beyond approving minutes when the agenda item is approving minutes, but I certainly think that we will expect and ask for this update at some point from staff on how these pieces of legislation affect our city. So that's my input, thanks.
Mayor, point of order.
Just to clarify, yeah.
Oh, point of order. So perhaps to Councilmember Cohen's points, we could give that direction to staff without taking a vote on it and potentially violating the Brown Act, so that that could still be scheduled?
Yeah, Nora can correct me on this, but I have seen in years past, items have been pulled off the Rules portion of the agenda to be separately voted on, often to take contrary positions to whatever the Rules Committee took. So that's not a new procedure, that's long been part of the city process, and my understanding, it comports with the, with all the standard rules. Again, Nora should definitely correct me if I'm wrong on that. I don't think we should be delving into the substance of the issue, and I don't think we are. What I think we're discussing is the process. Are we going to have a discussion on one day or a different day, and what is that discussion gonna include? And I think that's within the scope. Nora, you?
The council has the opportunity to ask the city manager to bring something forward, and this would be that opportunity. And I think the city manager has indicated that she would be willing to do that. And so it doesn't even really, at this point, require a formal vote. She will bring it forward based on what the council has indicated that would be their preference.
Well, it sounds like we have some difference in opinion about what exactly should be brought back, so.
And it's, it can be done if there is a difference of opinion, but it's for, it's for discussion, and it's just a request to the council member to bring something forward.
To the city manager.
I'm sorry, to the city manager.
Okay. Councilmember Renus?
I'm gonna pick up from where you left off here, because from what I remember, and I just checked my notes, when this item was brought to Rules, it was a opposition, a request for the city council to oppose SB 9 and SB 10. And I don't know, I mean, I can see a nexus, but not really. You're not asking for a continued opposition. And so it's not necessarily on the same subject. And so I don't feel that this is noticed well, I don't think it complies with what we normally would do. And even if there's been in past this practice, it doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do. And so if people are gonna pull items from meeting minutes, we can revive any item at any time, and I think that is a can of worms, and it's a Pandora's box I don't want to open. I'm gonna respectfully vote no. I voted no during that time, and I'm gonna continue to vote no. I think that the process is clear, the Rules Committee, this can be resubmitted to the Rules Committee by asking for an exploration of both of these bills versus asking for an opposition position from the city council. So it's a completely different request. If that request came through Rules Committee, I would have said yes, but not the opposition. And so this doesn't fall within, I don't understand, Nora, how this falls, how we can continue to talk about this if it's not noticed.
It's coming forward, as I understand it, it has morphed into a request of the city manager to bring something to council for discussion. And you're correct that the item that went to Rules is different from that, but the council can make a request of the city manager in these meetings, and if the city manager agrees to bring something forward, that can happen. So that's what I was referring to, but not specifically the minutes and the item that was in Rules.
Got it. So you're qualifying it under just a general request, a typical request that would go to our city manager, not necessarily qualifying it under this item in the meeting minutes. Okay. I'm going to vote yes for the information, because I think we always need to have information. And I think we need to have some alignment with ABAG and the folks that are sitting in that circle of expertise. And so I would like for us to bring information from ABAG and have a regional approach, city manager. And so when that study session comes in, that we have, we have this analysis that overlays the efforts that are being made currently through ABAG, which I'm sure is in alignment with what these bills are already. So I'm gonna vote no on the second half of this. I think it's premature to ask for an item to be on the ballot when we haven't made the analysis from our administration. We haven't decided what position we are gonna stand on this, and we don't understand what impact and effect it's gonna have in our city. And so that type of information needs to come forward before we even decide, because we're now predetermining what we're gonna do with that information, regardless of what it is, we're gonna decide that it goes on the ballot. And then I say, why even have a study session? Why even learn more about it if we're just gonna decide to move forward? So I'm gonna respectfully vote no on the first, on the second part of that, that is asking for that position, and I'm openly supporting more information. And I don't know how this, if this needs, if the motion needs to be clarified, Nora, or if it can stand the way that it is. I don't think, Councilmember Davis, you made any reference to meeting minutes, correct, from Rules? You did. So she did make a reference to the Rules meeting minutes, Nora, so how can she change this? So I can support the first part, but I won't support it qualifying it under the Rules meeting agenda item. I'll support it as a general request to the city manager, but not taking this out from the meeting minutes from Rules. So how can she edit that motion?
I'm sorry, I think we're conflating a lot of concepts. I think it would be helpful for Nora to clarify whether or not we have a motion or not at this point, or if there's merely a request that the city manager is responding to. I think that would be important to clarify first, is there a motion at this?
Well, I'm asking Councilmember Davis to clarify, not Nora, because Councilmember Davis is the one that made the motion.
But my point is, is that there may not be a motion? I'm trying to understand if there's even a motion right now.
And I was going to ask the clerk, was there, was there a second?
There was, yes. Councilmember Foley.
Okay, thank you. My, so there is a motion and a second, but separately, there was a request, what I took as a request to the city manager, whether or not there could be a study session, the city manager spoke to that. And this body can make a request to have something brought back if the city manager agrees. Otherwise, there is a motion and a second, and so the council will have to vote on that. And it, there are issues with the, with the motion itself, but the motion has been made and it's been seconded.
Okay. So is the question to the maker of the motion? Councilmember Renus?
What did you say?
Did you pose your question originally to the maker of the motion? Would you like her to respond?
Yes, I've been waiting for that.
Okay, yeah, Councilmember Davis?
So yes, my, my motion was to pass 2.3, which I pulled, and then to make these requests.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's not what Nora is saying we can do.
No, no, I think Nora just said that there are two things that are going on here. One's a request to city manager, and the other is a motion.
And the city manager has indicated that they'll set up either a study session or bring information back to the council on those bills, because there was a desire for a discussion and information on those bills.
So it sounds like we don't need a motion then, because city manager accepted to bring back that information?
Well, that's for the maker of the motion to determine. Obviously, there are other things in the motion beyond that request. So to the extent that the motion exceeds the request, there's a motion on the floor, and it's up to her as to whether she'd like to hold a motion or proceed with it. Councilmember Davis, do you want to respond?
Yeah, I would like to proceed with the motion, and I'm happy to bifurcate, since it seems like some of my colleagues are not in agreement with the second part of the motion, which they're both, both parts of the motion were a request. And since there is some disagreement, I think it makes sense to vote on them.
Okay, so you're now accepting the request to bifurcate, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm gonna substitute and make a motion to request the city manager to bring forth an analysis on both of these bills through a study session.
I'll second that.
That's equivalent to the first part of the bifurcated motion. That's equivalent to the first part of the bifurcated motion, isn't it?
No, it isn't, because the second part of her motion asked to explore a ballot measure as an option.
Yeah, I think we're saying exactly the same thing. It's identical to the first part of the bifurcated motion. So what we'll do is we'll vote on the first part of the bifurcated motion, which appears to be what you've requested, and then we'll vote on the second part of the bifurcated motion.
Is that the substitute motion that Councilmember Renas just made?
No, you can't have a substitute that's the same as the motion on the floor. That's the problem. So we have a bifurcated motion that includes what Councilmember Renas articulated, which is Part 1 of the bifurcated motion. So we'll vote on that. And then there'll be Part 2 of bifurcated motion, which is what Councilmember Davis has articulated.
Okay, we're splitting hairs here.
And that includes accepting the minutes, right, because we still have to do that on this agenda.
That's right.
Can somebody read that back? Yeah.
So we have a bifurcated motion right now.
No, we have a substitute motion with my motion that says that we bring back a study session, and I'm gonna add that we don't explore, that we don't explore a ballot measure prematurely. So there it is.
Okay. So now there is a substitute motion. Is there a second?
And a second.
Okay. There's a substitute motion and a second. Councilmember Foley?
Okay. So now the substitute motion, just to be clear, is to, if I can be clear, is to vote on a study session on SB 9 and 10. Is that correct?
Yes.
Which effectively was the first part of Councilmember Davis's motion, and the reason I seconded it, because studying it and learning about it is really important for this council member. And the second is not to discuss any ballot measure. Is that correct?
Correct.
And point of clarification, I think that word was qualified by prematurely.
And you'll include improving the minutes, approving the rest of 2.3 in your motion, right?
Yes, I'll go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just gonna leave it at that so we can vote and move on. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Foley, for reminding us we do have an agenda. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I'm a little bit confused about why the substitute motion basically just didn't allow me to bifurcate my motion. So the fact that it is explicit about not bringing forward a ballot measure, I'm unfortunately going to be unable to support the substitute motion.
Councilmember Sparza?
Sorry, Mayor, I think that was up from earlier.
Okay. Councilmember Mahan?
Thanks. I think I'll also be voting against. I appreciated Councilmember Davis's original motion. And I took it, maybe Councilmember Davis can confirm this, I took it to mean that we would be understanding the potential electoral landscape and potential referenda that may be out there statewide, as well as our own options, and that this was really in the spirit of learning, not us actually voting up or down on putting something on the ballot. Is that correct?
We always have a discussion about putting something on the ballot before we actually put something on the ballot. So yes, this was the discussion before the vote.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Proust?
I was gonna try to come in with a substitute myself that was just gonna approve the minutes at this point, but it's too late for that.
Yes, it is. We already have a substitute.
Because ultimately, I think actually that's kind of all, you know, the action we're doing. It sounded like the city manager was fine bringing back information. I think we could have, you know, we're making it more explicit that it's for a study session, which I actually do agree with. I think we should have that. And quite frankly, I think that regardless of if we have a position today that says, let's go explore a ballot measure, or let's not go explore a ballot measure, ultimately, somebody could bring forward that request after the study session to rules, and we can have that discussion then. So in essence, I really think that the real, you know, action would be just approve the minutes and then agree that the city manager is coming back so we can be educated on SB 9 and 10. But I'm comfortable with this moving forward, and I think we'll have another discussion about this at some point after the study session.
All right. Yes, we will. I was fine with the original motion. I'm not sure I understand what prematurely means in the context of having the discussion prematurely. I think inevitably, we're gonna want to have the discussion. So I'm not gonna support the substitute motion, because I think we ought to have it all on the table and discuss it, because the public's going to, and we might as well as well. It's all on the same subject. All right, let's vote on the substitute motion. All right, that motion?
I'm still waiting on a vote.
All right, that motion passes. On to item 2.6.
I need to announce the noes, since some people can't see it. We have Mayor Locardo, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Foley, and Councilmember Mahan voting no.
Thank you, Tony. All right, item 2.6. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I promise I won't make a motion or do anything confusing. But I am talking about pensions, so actually, it might be confusing. So the Federated Pension Board met last week on the 23rd, and because we're coming to a study session this Thursday about pension obligation bonds, and it will be a joint study session with Police and Fire and Federated Retirement Boards, I wanted to talk a little bit about the discussion that they had, so that everyone here could be aware of what they're talking about in their boards regarding potential, basically a windfall if we end up doing a pension obligation bond and give them excess funds in one year. So they had a little bit of dueling advice from Chiron, which is their actuary, basically, I think. And there was a presentation on amortization policy and a discussion about what to do if there is pension obligation bond funds that come in. So the advice from Chiron was, the recommendation was that the pension board matches the amortization period with the term of the bond. And that was basically in the spirit of kind of cooperation, and to try to make sure that the initial credit from putting in those excess funds would be at least as large as our initial payment on the bonds, so that the equivalent would be maintained, the equivalent payment as what would have been in the absence of the POB, at least for the first year, and with the recognition that things can change over time. That discussion happened immediately preceding the discussion from the fiduciary council about what the board was responsible for and what their fiduciary duties are. And apparently, a confidential legal memo had gone to the board about their fiduciary responsibilities. And I believe in this context, he was talking about the POB. So it makes sense that there was something in there about that, although obviously, it was confidential. I don't know what was in there. But his advice, the fiduciary council's advice, was not to disrupt the ordinary processes regardless of any kind of windfall or source of funds, and that the board should be agnostic about the source. So his advice was to not care about, and I wrote this down because it was disconcerting to me, was for the board not to care about the risk benefit analysis of the city and to just plug in to their normal processes any money that comes in. It would be no different than any earnings that they have from the system. And so that was a little bit concerning, that they're having just kind of a disagreement among their legal counsel. So the fiduciary counsel is legal counsel, and then one of their consultants. So I just wanted to make sure that we are all aware that that is happening. And of course, there is, at least from my perspective, I think there is probably a bias on the board for the legal counsel and what their advice is as opposed to what their consultant's advice is. They did say, you know, to get more information and to have a further discussion, and the board is definitely looking forward to the discussion on Thursday. But I guess I wanted to make sure that all of the council was aware of this discussion, and I'm not sure how the discussion went at Police and Fire a couple of weeks ago. But I am very concerned that we are not necessarily all jumping together in our discussion about POB funds and the implications of what that would be potentially for our city budget. And of course, our city budget, from my perspective, has a bearing on the stability of the plans and vice versa. That does not seem to be what the fiduciary council's view is, and very much is, I guess I would say, I think the fiduciary council advises the boards to have tunnel vision about their responsibilities and not to think about the city and the city's budget and our fiscal stability citywide. And I would caution my colleagues when we're having this discussion on Thursday to keep that in mind. And with that, I guess I can move this item, 2.6.
Second. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. I appreciate very much your insights. I might point out that I think their attorney may well be duty-bound to say exactly what they said, given their fiduciary responsibility to the board. But your point's very well taken.
He did say that they have a lot of discretion in setting their amortization policy and their, obviously, their asset allocation policies. So they have the discretion to do that. And I would also, I would argue that the fiduciary responsibility to maintain the stability of the plan requires some thought about the stability of the city's budget. He does not take that view.
Fair point. Councilmember Foley?
Just wanted to echo Councilmember Davis's comments from the Federated Retirement Board. It was a very similar discussion at Police and Fire Retirement Board a couple of weeks ago. And I look forward to the study session in a couple of days to really discuss this issue in detail with all three of our groups.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, we'll take public comment on 2.6, which is the report that the council lays on to the retirement boards. We will not take public comment on anything else at this moment.
Paul Soto?
I did one guess. Who was that?
Yep. And what's happening is that there's a dichotomy between the public, like, marketing of police and fire and their heroes. They jump into, you know, they will do anything at any time, and like, these are superheroes. This is how, like, they will do, no matter what, anything. And then when it comes to money, though, when it comes down to it, they are arguing, they want every single last cent. And it gets, like, greedy. I mean, we're, and you see, this is coming from, I live on $500 a month. That's how much I get. $500 per month. And so when I'm listening to people, like, what did you do? Did you swear an oath to do this? Or was, did you do it for financial gain? Why did you do it? And did those reasons why you did it, did those evolve over time? Did you get more thirsty for money and the power? Was that it? I don't know, because they sound so idealistic, man, in the first five years. You ask, hey, ask a cop or a fire department, hey, why'd you go, oh, no, no, he'd give this speech, and right when they're done with it, I say, okay, now tell me the real reason why. You know, when some of them are honest, they love the groupies. They love the fact, women just love cops and fire departments, man. I get it. I totally get it. But that's not the way it's articulated in the context of these meetings, though. It's about money. I want to get paid. I want as much as I can get from the city. I don't care. I put in my work. Are you gonna challenge me? I'm the hero of the community. I'm the hero. So if you challenge me, you're challenging the hero, and I'm gonna just completely ostracize you for doing that. That's what happens.
Tessa Woodmatzey?
Thank you, Tessa Woodmatzey. Thank you. Well, you know, in terms of our pension and allotments, you know, we always have to look at how we're investing these pension funds. And, you know, are we putting it in fossil fuels, you know, and we have to stop that. And, you know, I guess what Paul is saying is that we must be paying too much to our police. And even in the charter meeting that was yesterday, they were talking about, like, you can't even overrun anything about the police. If you say something, they can override anything, any changes. They have the ability to override. They have a lot of power. So we have to look at that power structure of the police in terms of reimagining safety, but getting back to the
Tessa, we're pretty far off here.
I know, I know. Okay, I'm talking about the retirement boards and how we're investing our money. So, hello, thank you. And so basically, that's what I'm talking about. How are these retirement funds being invested? Are they invested in fossil fuels? They should not be. And that's what I'm talking about now, as we go forward, and we are dealing with our crisis of fossil fuels, that we have to stop, we have to divest, divest, and degrow. And so that's very important, where our retirement funds are, and all of it, you know, in terms of the whole city council, and, you know, and all the monies that you're dealing with. They should be, we want to see where you're investing. We want to see that. And that should be exposed to the public of how our monies are being invested, because we should not be investing in fossil fuels because of the horrific damage they are causing to us. It's a crime against humanity to invest in fossil fuels. So we need to have full exposure in terms of every department, and including our retirement funds and all our investment funds. We need to look at that and make sure we are reducing our, you know, support of fossil fuels.
Back to council.
Yes, it is. Okay, we now have the, was that a motion for 2.6 and the entire council, the consent calendar?
I'm happy to do that if we didn't already vote on the rest of the consent calendar.
All right. That's okay with the seconders?
I have a second.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay.
We had paralysis the second.
Okay, all right.
We may have misheard. Sometimes it's hard to hear if you're not mine.
I don't believe I did, to be honest.
Okay.
All right, he's
Cohen said it was Cohen.
This is the hardest consent calendar we've had in a while.
So should we go to public comment?
Yes, on any other item on consent.
Tessa Woodmatzey?
Oh, good, thank you. Yeah, well, the other item I noticed was now Mayor Locardo going to his meeting of mayors in some city outside. And, you know, hello, are you there? So, oh, okay, can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, good. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And the city was state in Ohio.
Oh, thank you, sweetheart. Very nice. I know. Now you'll have to paint that porch. I'm sorry. But anyway, that's a much better thing for you to do, Mayor Locardo. We need to stay home. We need to be engaged in our neighborhood. We need to be fixing our neighborhood. And everything we do has to be about being local and live like a plant. We need to start living like plants, where all our needs are met in one place. And the beauty of our society is that we have figured out ways of connecting to each other, because it's very important. We are social beings, and we can do it without burning fossil fuels. I mean, relatively. I mean, the thing is, you know, the use of our internet is such a great demand of fossil fuels, and we need a controlled demolition, because otherwise, we will have an uncontrolled demolition. And if we don't stop reducing, which air traffic is an easy thing to reduce. It is the movement of the rich in our society, and that's what needs to change. We need to stop flying and stop driving. And so, you know, do I support you going to that meeting? Yes, I do, because I'm glad you're connecting. But there's no reason for you not to fly there. And, you know, and so this is what we need to do, is connect, you know, do virtual. That is where we need to move everything. And we stay home, and we reduce our fossil fuel use, and we still connect. And if we don't start doing that and making the transformational changes, which we can easily make, we saw how successful it was under COVID, we can do that. We can do our connection through Zoom and then, or whatever technologies. And the thing is, is that if we don't, then we will have an uncontrolled demolition, because we are going towards annihilation of the species, and all of us. And we can make these simple changes, like, you know, like he says, common sense, like, don't fly, don't drive. There are ways to do it. Let's have a revolution.
Blair Beekman, followed by Paul Soto?
All right, Blair Beekman. Thank you that you caught yourselves and that you realized you needed to ask if there was any public comment for remaining consent calendar items. Thank you. To speak to 2.9 and 2.14, in what has become regular for myself to describe, don't be afraid, this is with item 2.9, don't be afraid to question height limits in the afraid, this is with item 2.9, don't be afraid to question height limits in the future of the downtown area. If something is dangerous or unsafe with height limits, it should be okay to ask and to consider to take down the building heights by additional 25, 50 to 75 feet if needed. To speak to item 2.14, and to speak to COVID-19 issues, this item is addressing for this fall, I hope we can continue to consider open, creative, good ways in how to talk about the future directions of COVID-19, its variants, the vaccine process, and the pluses of the aerosol vaccine process. As continued mask use seems it may be able to well address safe community health practices this fall, certainly a hope. Many people now have a vaccine. From this, I'm hoping we can work so SJ City employees can continue to have options with weekly tests for COVID, as 48-hour testing is becoming standard in what can be available before live sporting events. Through much difficulty, California and this country is learning to interesting ways to open up the economy in this era of COVID-19. This has been based on creative, well-intended, good thinking that is meant to address people's concerns from all sides of difficult COVID-19 issues. L.A. City schools are thinking of the vaccine mandates for students by January 2022. From this, I hope San Jose can consider to put off its city government vaccine mandate for more community thought and understanding this fall and until at least January 2022. Thank you.
Paul Soto, followed by Brian.
Yeah, Paul Soto, Mayor Lucardo, you know what? I know that was painful. It was painful to compel Tony to ask for public comment. So I want to acknowledge that. I want to, thank you. I appreciate that. Well, last week or a week before, when you made a trip to President Biden's, you had a meeting there at the White House. What I had requested of Councilmember Peralis is that when you're making, when you're going to meetings like this, this isn't a personal trip. Actually, to be quite honest with you, you're going in my stead, so you're representing me. And so, understanding that democracy, that's how democracy works, is that I posed a question to him, and I said, well, not a question, but a request, that when you come back, and any, this goes for any council member, when you're conducting that kind of business and you're with leaders, because you're going to be around a bunch of mayors, you're talking about homelessness, is that what I'm requesting at that time, and I believe that he affirmed it, I don't know the language, but he said, yeah, that's cool. Yeah, I agree with that. And what it was is that a memo was produced, because you're going on city money, so we're paying for your trip. And so that you produce a memo, and, you know, not lengthy or not like that, you know, just what are the highlights, you know? Give me some bullet points. What was talked about? Who did you talk about? What was the, like, something that really grabbed your attention, that you thought that maybe was a good idea that you could possibly implement here? Those would give us a grab, because you're going in my stead. So I would like to know what you gathered from me flipping the bill. You know, I think that's just, I think that's democratic, I think that's reasonable, and this goes for any council member, that when you go, you're not going for yourself, you're a representative of who we are. And thus, we have an expectation to be able to download that information so that we can benefit from it. Thank you.
Before I go to Brian, I just want to remind people who've already spoken, I'm going to continue to put your hand down if you've already spoken. You only get one chance to speak. Brian?
To President Biden, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if they talked a lot about the 3D home printing, the large printers that use cement and other mixtures to actually print homes out, and we're talking from nine to 1,100 square foot homes, and the raw cost is about $4,000 to $8,000. And they come with the conduits already built in for the electrical and all that stuff. And fully deployed, they've got as low as $8,000 for 1,100 square foot, fully ready home, not counting the roof. So I think it's like $20,000 altogether. And it's been done in Arizona, it's been done down south in, I think they said Guadalajara. I don't have all that. I'm going to send you something, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to put my voice to it, because I think, you know, I know it cuts into how labor produces things, and that's probably one of the things you've discussed, is, but even like some of the, Mr. Mayhem said, you know, $100,000 per unit is understandable because of what we're doing, but we've got to shrink it down and make it massive without being, you know, disenfranchising anybody. I don't know, I can't do it. That's why I didn't run for mayor. So I'm looking to you guys to do that, ladies and gentlemen. Anyways, I'm wishing you the best. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Note for the record that Councilmember Davis suggested friendly amendment that I take my bike to Dayton, Ohio to address the concerns Ms. Woodman-Chee has about carbon emissions from the planet.
We dare you, Mayor.
Yeah. Anything to get me out of town, I understand. But I know there's been a lot of speculation about what this trip is about, apparently. So I'm, this is a trip to attend a meeting of the U.S. Mayor's Conference in Dayton. I've been appointed to the advisory board, and so it's a leadership meeting. It's really not that exciting, but we'll try to make it that way. All right, there's a, there's a motion. Let's vote. Here we go. All right, now we're on to the agenda, or the rest of the agenda, I should say.
The vote was unanimous.
Thank you. We have a report from the city manager and a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and city council. Today, we're going to give you a COVID-19 update, and we have several staff that are coming down. We'll have about a 15-minute presentation, then we'll have some time for any Q and A after that. So I'm going to turn it over to Lee Wilcox to do the introduction.
Thank you, Jennifer. Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager. And I'm going to let our small but mighty team get in place. Mayor and council, it's been four weeks since our last report to you or update on COVID-19. Since that time, because of our local area's high vaccination rate, our own numbers continue to improve locally, while the rest of the country continues to deal with plunging numbers. Dolan will go into this in a bit. Our emergency operations center, next slide, continues to support our emergency operations in the various departments, which you will hear directly from the department directors today. We continue to monitor the pandemic, national, state, local data, as well as communicate services to those most vulnerable that are still in need, given where we are with the pandemic locally. Today, you'll hear directly from Dolan Beckel around what's happening nationally, at a state level, locally, from Alvin Galang around our vaccination efforts with the county, from Autumn Young around communications and outreach, Matt Kano around hybrid work in our facilities and implementing the vaccination mandate for large events, from Jackie Morales Ferrand around our evictions and rental relief programs, Sarah Zorade around advocacy and what we're hearing from the White House around President Biden's plans, as well as John Cicirelli around childcare and food distribution, from Jill Bourne on digital equity. And we're going to continue to use this format to talk to you about what has changed since we last spoke to you, what's new and what's driving this change as we continue to walk through this. Next slide. Before I turn it off to Dolan, I do want to say this is a summary of what we've heard at a federal and national and local level. Obviously, as you drive into work, listen to the news, this continues to change and evolve quite rapidly, daily, and in the case of CDC and FDA, sometimes hourly. So this is our best attempt to summarize what we're hearing and what's the most important as we look forward to the next few weeks. With that, I'll hand it off to our operations chief, Dolan Beckel.
Thanks, Lee. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, members of the public and city staff. Dolan Beckel here, interim deputy director, excuse me, interim deputy city manager. I'll now present the trends in COVID-19 data emphasizing the changes since our last COVID-19 update on August 17th. So since our last update, the Delta variant, the most serious variant labeled a variant of concern, remains highly transmissible through most of the United States, as seen in the red shading here on the CDC map, and it remains the dominant variant in the United States. As shown in the orange dotted circle, pretty much in the center of the screen, the Bay Area counties are faring better with a substantial but not high transmission rate. In South America and other regions, the Mew variant, a less serious variant of interest, is being watched closely, as preliminary data indicates it is more infectious but fortunately less transmissible than the Delta variant. The overall national vaccine rate for the United States is 75.1%, far from the 90% we need to be insured of herd immunity and getting our way out of the coronavirus response. The good news is that the county, positive cases and deaths are decreasing after a peak during COVID-19 wave four on August 19th. Of course, neither the city nor the county are isolated islands, and we must remain vigilant to ensure the stability of our public health system and safety of our residents and employees. One of the primary indicators of the stability of the public health system is intensive care units, or ICU bed availability. As this graph shows, while our ICU bed availability has been relatively stable during wave four, we remain at only 24% of the ICU beds available at the beginning of the pandemic. While the situation is currently stable, the county does not have a large contingency should there be a more serious variant arise during the winter months and thus requiring a major countywide surge again in ICU bed availability. Since our last update, both the county and the city vaccination rates continue to increase. The city's vaccination rate has moved from 85.7% on August 17th to 92.7% now, excuse me, 92.5% now, or a 7% increase. The county's vaccination rate has moved from 80.3% to 88.4% or an 8% increase. Later in today's update, our EOC Vaccination Branch Director, Alvin Galang, will explain the city and the county's continued commitment to the ongoing vaccination drive. Should be noted, this data is not inclusive of boosters, third, nor additional shots, and we will be working with the county to determine the best way to present that data. It should be noted that since we met last, we have accomplished two important things surrounding the COVID-19 data. First, I finally and recently received a point of contact with the county to engage in understanding the underlying data and taking corrective action if appropriate. And second, we just recently signed an employment agreement with one of our previous EOC data analysts, who will be starting with the city shortly, to help us continue our efforts in reporting clear and accurate data. As we move forward with these EOC updates, we'll endeavor to point out those areas where we are clarifying the data and are taking any action to correct the data. There were some questions at our August 17th meeting about the data on this page. We did spend quite a bit of time with the county to understanding the underlying data, and if anybody would like the painful answers during Q and A, I'm happy to answer about how we're confident in the accuracy of this data and why there are certain comparison discrepancies that arise. So our public health efforts continue to pay off. San Jose has the highest vaccination rate in the nation, among the top 10 largest United States cities, which is probably the most important comparison, given the scale and complexity of the cities. The source of this data is my eyeballs on the data on the specific website, so I'm very confident in the data that's being presented to you here. So this concludes our presentation on the latest COVID-19 data and trends. I'll now turn the presentation back to Lee Wilcox.
I believe we are handing it off to Alvin.
Great. Thank you, Lee. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council members, members of the public. My name is Alvin Galang, and I am the Director of the City's Vaccination Task Force from the City Manager's Office of Emergency Management. As you can see, the numbers that Dolan presented, numbers-wise, we are headed in the right direction. Nearly all cities in Santa Clara County have over 90% vaccination rate of 12 and over with at least one dose. And as shown, City of San Jose is at over 92, it's actually 92.6% as of today. So it is a 0.1% incremental change, but when you take that into consideration that the City of San Jose has a population of nearly a million people or over a million people, that 0.1% accounts for 1,000 folks, right? 1,000 potential lives, 1,000 potential livelihoods that we've saved. Since July, the Vaccination Task Force has been in daily communications with the county's mobile vaccination team, working in tandem to identify locations that continue to experience lower vaccination rates. This county partnership has been strengthened by the increased and sustained supply of enough vaccine and the refocus of vaccinations from the larger mass vaccination sites to these mobile pop-up vaccination sites. Again, a more hyper-focused locations, hyper-focused clinics in these hard-to-serve areas. So I would like to take an opportunity to thank Santa Clara County Public Health Department, as well as our other providers, for their continued support and partnership. So what's driving the change? As Dolan mentioned, the Delta variant is driving the change. It started in July, it peaked in August, and now September, it is coming down. The variant may have also encouraged more people to get their vaccinations. For instance, countywide, in the month of July, around 2,600 daily vaccinations were administered. By August, that number had increased to around 3,000 vaccinations, and in September, it's settled back down to 2,500 vaccinations. So what we're doing is we're monitoring the decisions, the direction from federal government, from the county on booster doses, and of course, the third slash additional doses as well. And so what's new? We had a mid-August peak of around 410 per 100,000, and it's currently down to under 200 per 100,000, when talking about the COVID-19 case rates. And our focused communication efforts, which will be covered more in depth by my colleague, Autumn Young, and our continued dedication to serving our most vulnerable populations within the high priority census tracts. Next slide, please. What you'll see here are numbers, again, the changes since August, where nearly across the board, we've increased our vaccination rates for white, black, Latino, Latina, Latinx, and yes, the Asian population has had some minimal increase as well. The City of San Jose, again, is at 92.6% vaccination rate, and we've had increases in the vaccines delivered with our partners, as well as increases in the resident impressions digital vaccine outreach. Next slide, please. What you see in front of you are the 13 or the current census tracts, 13 census tracts within the City of San Jose that have lower vaccination rates. As you'll notice, and as Dolan had pointed out, there are some discrepancies with particularly Alviso. The same can also be said for the Sun neighborhoods and the Nagley Park neighborhoods, specifically with the Sun neighborhoods and the Nagley Park neighborhoods. Those are neighborhoods that kind of surround San Jose State University, and so taking into account the large number of college students that live in the area, that may also be why, again, the Sun neighborhood and Nagley Park neighborhood is listed as one of our lower vaccination rates or lower census tracts with vaccination rates. But still, with the remaining census tracts, regardless of the Alviso, Sun, Nagley Park, bottom line is that we're not going to lose focus on making sure that we do outreach and that we do provide vaccinations to these areas within the City of San Jose. So with that, I will now let Autumn Young speak on how we're reaching our residents with vital information. I don't think the mic is out.
I think your mic is out.
Proud member of the Recovery Communications Team. You heard Alvin talk about our remaining unvaccinated, and we understand that they're maybe not able to get or may not trust the information from mainstream platforms. So how are we reaching this group? It really requires a greater investment in relational capital. That means engaging our trusted messengers to encourage vaccination. Add that to the expiration of moratoriums and benefits, that's really driving a need to include recovery information along with our vaccination and isolation and testing information. So how are we doing that? We're working with our trusted partners, our trusted messengers, to help get the word out about vaccination and recovery. And you see, some of those. And you see some of those listed on the screen there. Specifically, we've been working with our ground team outreach from our CDBG partnerships like Community University and Somos Mayfair, other partners like Asian American Center of Santa Clara County, OCSA, and Catholic Charities, to name a few. And we're also amplifying the social media of these trusted partners. Our partners at COVID-19 Black have great content, so we're able to amplify their message and get that out to the communities so that they can hear it. And our fabulous integrity partners at the San Jose Fire Department co-designed a banner, which you also see on your screen, that will go on all of our 30 fire stations, knowing that those messengers are really a valuable partner in the community. And then we've got our trusted redeploying our tactics that work, our reactivating our Spanish-language radio advertising on four stations. We're doing a direct mail piece that actually includes recovery resources along with vaccination information out to our priority neighborhoods. And as Alvin mentioned, the county has really ramped up their hyper-focused clinic, which you can see by the image on the right, that that is one slide for two days of vaccination clinic opportunities, that we are creating those slides. And then in concert, the county is creating social media and flyers that we're able to get out to the community, which is a really great benefit. We didn't have that resource before, and that takes the load off of our team. Slide two, please, next slide. Great. WIA works. The wireless emergency alert system, we send out in Spanish and English to our hardest-to-reach residents, and we believe these are actually residents that wouldn't get the message otherwise, and it works to get vaccine doses in arms. You can see the quote from Sue Ellen Hagerty of the Santa Clara County Public Health Department. She said, "As part of my role in observation, I asked almost every patient how they heard about the clinic. With three exceptions," and this was 158 vaccinations, "with three exceptions, everyone else said they got the text alert on their phone." So we're here saying that nearly 100% of the patients were directed to their vaccine by the text alert. We believe the text alert was integral to the successful turnout and also for the clinic at El Vizo exclamation point, exclamation point, exclamation point, exclamation point. Thanks for your leadership in our community. And this is a great tactic, but we really have to use balance when we are using this. We know that these alerts turn out the residents, but it also comes with some concerns about oversaturation and making sure that we aren't overbroadcasting. There is a small glitch in the system that doesn't allow us to hyper-focus as much as we can, so it goes out to a wider group. And because of that, we've used these guidelines for selecting the clinics to promote. We plan our WIA broadcasts about seven days apart. We select locations that serve the highest priority census tracts and neighborhoods. And within those highest priority census tracts and neighborhoods, we make sure to consider equitable implementation across council districts. We've deployed 11 notifications to date. The next one up is this coming this Saturday for an event on Sunday at the Horace Curatun School in District 5. The text alert has another great benefit, and that is that it drives recipients to the City of San Jose Emergency Notification webpage, where visitors also get additional recovery support information along with the vaccine clinic details in the language they prefer. An example of that, you see on the screen a snapshot of the safety alert. You've got a small piece in Spanish and then the English longer alert. On the day that that went out, we had over 5,200 recipients click the English page. Now, that's 10 times the usual traffic of our webpage. And then more than 1,500 clicked to the Spanish-language page. Close to 200 visitors went to the Vietnamese and Chinese page, which is significant because users actually have to take an additional step to select that language. So WIA works, and we are really proud to be able to use that to get shots in arms. So in closing, the Recovery Communications Team is continuing to message vaccination and testing and isolation services and is ready to support what's next for amplifying additional recovery resources, boosters and third doses, as well as the under 12 age group when approved. Thank you. Now I'll pass it over to Matt Keno, who will present about city facilities.
Thank you, Autumn. Matt Keno, Director of Public Works, have a brief presentation on hybrid work facilities and resources. What has changed? So we have for employees who can effectively perform their work from home, we have delayed bringing those employees back to the in-person office work until November 1st. We have, as you're aware, adopted and implemented a vaccination ordinance for events of 50 or more people in city-owned facilities, and that took effect on September 20th. Those changes are being driven by the increasing cases and risk of COVID due to the Delta virus and prioritizing the safety of our community. A few new things to mention, the EOC had moved the activation up from Level 4, which was monitoring, to Level 3 as the Delta variant continued to impact our area. And as you are aware, we're sitting today in a hybrid meeting that is in-person and on Zoom for city council meetings. However, due to some staffing vacancies and lack of staffing and equipment, we are holding off on having hybrid meetings for committees and commissions until a future date. And we'll be able to report more on that as the month, as time goes by, and happy to answer any questions on this later during the discussion. And I'll turn it over to Jackie now for the next part of the update.
Thank you, Matt. I'm Jackie Morales-Franz, and I am the Director of Housing, and I'm here to discuss both the eviction and rental relief response. So in terms of what has changed, the state eviction moratorium under AB 832 is going to be ending at the end of this month. And what that means for our tenants is that they are going to have to pay full rent beginning October 1st. AB 832 does provide some additional protections that continue through March 2022, and the staff will be providing a more detailed report later on in this agenda. And one of the biggest changes, of course, that came with AB 832 is that it does prevent the city or county from taking any further action when it comes regarding eviction protections until April 1st of 2022. We continue to implement our rental relief program, and you can see from this slide the number of different outreach programs we've been working on over the past couple of months. In terms of an update, locally, we've received 5,800 applications with $65 million worth of funds requested from both the city and county, because it's a combined program. We've paid over close to half of those requests, distributing close to $25 million. From the state applications, I can draw down the City of San Jose only, and they have received a little over 5,000 applications, which they have funded a little over 2,000. Their funds requested just from the City of San Jose is over 67 million, and they've paid over $26 million. And so they've spent close to 100% of our ERA funds. And as you know, we are working on moving our ERA II funds to the state. And with that, I'll be available for questions, and I'm turning it over to Sarah.
Good afternoon. Sarah Sadafay, Director of the Office of Governmental Strategy and Governmental Relation. The state legislature adjourned on September 10th. For their interim recess and will reconvene in January 2022. We did not see statewide vaccine mandate legislation move forward this year, and as mentioned by our housing team, unfortunately, no additional legislation was put forward or executive order issued to extend the eviction moratorium that expires on September 30th. The city led extensive advocacy to amend the state's Brown Act laws to allow exceptions for immunocompromised members of boards and commissions. Thank you again to the council members for submitting letters advocating for legislative amendments. Although our proposed amendments were not accepted, our concerns were heard loud and clear by the Governor's Office and Assembly Member Rivas, who added an urgency clause to AB 361. This bill was signed by the governor and allows remote meetings to continue under an emergency declaration. Our city clerk also authored a memo on this item, if you're interested in further details. Additionally, we continue to monitor the implementation of the White House path out of the pandemic action plan and any related federal action. At this time, we have no further updates on implementation beyond the booster updates you heard from Alvin. On the budget front, California released draft guidelines for financial assistance to residents and businesses for pass-through water and electricity bills. We anticipate funding availability this winter. The governor also signed Omnibus Budget Bill SB 155, providing an extension on the moratorium for water service disconnections. No disconnections can be done for non-payment until after December 31st, 2021. Lastly, recommended adjustments to the community and economic recovery budget will be considered at the November 2nd city council meeting. Additional information on utility or rearage programs will also be provided at the November council meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to John. John and Jill.
Thank you. Good afternoon. John Tesorelli, Director of Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services. I'm going to do a quick update on food distribution and childcare. In August, we provided 8.75 million meals to our community. About half of those were by second harvest. We are seeing inflation impact the cost of food, water, milk, gas, so that is driving some cost for us. We are extending contracts with our current providers under some authority we already have from the council previously through the end of this calendar year. It's likely we'll be back to extend that even further as part of the November 2nd meeting we're going to have about extending into the first quarter of the next year, so that will be January through March. That's expected to be around $1.2 million, sorry. We are monitoring the insecurity. Obviously, we know that insecurity goes up around the holidays. That's a concern for us, so that's part of why we're extending the current contracts. That wasn't the original plan, but we want to be ready for the uncertainty and really just get through the holidays, as Dolan will tell you. Everything kind of went sideways last year, starting with about Halloween and then the holidays, and so we locked back down, if you all recall. So we're going to take a wait-and-see approach and try to be prepared, to be reactive if something goes sideways again this year. Of course, we're hopeful that it won't. But otherwise, food is relatively stable right now. On childcare front, we had over 250 youth that benefited from our community development block grants to the tune of over a half a million dollars of support. We began 31 after-school programs in mid-August, transitioning from summer camps into schools. We're serving now a little over 1,100 youth on a daily basis. We are struggling a little bit with, you know, obviously, in these age categories, these are kids from kindergarten through sixth primarily. So these are unvaccinated individuals that our staff are interacting with. So sometimes people are getting exposed. We are seeing some positive cases, either in the kids or in their families, or even the teachers. And then the kids that were in the teacher's class got exposed. We have some trouble with the schools sharing health information with minors, as you can imagine, so we're creating a parental consent form to ask the parents, just give us permission that if something comes up, the school can talk to us about it. Because what we've done is we started to break the, you know, we might have 30 kids in an after-school program or more, so we're trying to keep them a little isolated into smaller groups so that if one of those kids was exposed, only a portion of the larger group has to quarantine or be affected. The rest of the group, we're keeping six feet or more away, so the exposure isn't the same. So it's one of the things we're trying to do to sort of mitigate, so that we're not shutting down full classes. We did manage to get our teen centers open, so we're serving a little under 200 teens a day, so we're happy to see those kids not on the street for at least some hours of the day. We also, of course, got recreation preschool going. We've got 16 classes over 12 locations. We'll do 58 throughout the year, that's in-person. And last but not least, of course, we're pursuing a variety of funding sources, both state and federal, both of our friends at IGR, but also through the County Office of Education, who we meet with frequently. I'll pass this on to our city librarian.
Good afternoon. Mayor and Council, Jill Warren, City Librarian and Lead on the Digital Equity Team. Happy to report that all work streams are moving forward as planned. The community Wi-Fi projects are all progressing on schedule. Construction will start at the Independence High School attendance area in November. We also have 1,200 new library hotspots that have been ordered. Expected arrival and circulation starting in early October. Our school hotspot partnership is providing 3,820 hotspots to start the school year, and will be expanding to 6,100 hotspots through the Emergency Connectivity Fund if awarded. And finally, Chromebooks, iPads, hotspots, and other devices are continued limited availability through our San Jose Public Library branches, but this collection is growing all the time. I just wanted to note that we do have a detailed report on digital inclusion and equity activities coming to both the Smart Cities and the Neighborhood Services and Education Committees within the next month. And I'll pass it to Jackie.
From the start of the pandemic through September 24th, the isolation and quarantine program has helped nearly 1,914 persons, including persons without a permanent home, to isolate or quarantine in hotels. In addition, we've provided supportive services and over, a little over $1 million in groceries and other necessities to help the close to 5,200 households to meet their needs. We've also distributed close to $9.5 million in direct rental and financial assistance to 4,472 households. 90% of the people who've been helped in this program are residents of San Jose. We're working with the county, who has requested additional funding until the end of this year in order to continue to offer these services. All of the county isolation and quarantine staff have been trained to provide assistance on our rental assistance program, including application assistance to residents who are contacted through the hotline. The county is also meeting with colleges, including San Jose State, to provide public health protocols and isolation and quarantine resources for their students and staff. So we continue to work to expand the program and to provide additional services as the pandemic continues. And with that, I'm turning it over to Lee.
Thank you, Jackie, and thank you, Mayor and Council and public. That concludes our presentation. We're available for questions.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for the great work and for the excellent presentation of a lot of work that's been done across the organization. Let's go to public comment first. Tony, thank you.
I currently have three hands up. Tessa Woodmansey, followed by Paul.
Thank you. So I guess it's going. Okay, good. So Tessa Woodmansey, and basically, you know, somebody was talking earlier today, the way we treat our children is the way we are as a society. And there are so many, many children that have gotten COVID in the long haul, and they are experiencing. I mean, we already have so much ADHD and so much mental illness amongst our children, and a lot of it is attributed to the lack of parental care. And it really is that mother care, and they see that boys have a harder time separating. But anyway, getting back to it, what we're doing, we've been doing this for this generation, since my generation, since the early, you know, '70s, where we have abandoned our children and, you know, to schools and gone to work, when the mother has gone to work. And the problem is, is that, you know, so they're getting COVID, you know, and we're not making changes about that. And we're saying, you know, they have to go to school because it's like the daycare so mothers can go to work. And we have to change this whole thing and transformational change, and it does come from universal basic income that we should be using to help the mother stay home and to educate her children. And the thing, it's the same model that I'm talking about in terms of housing, that we need housing for homeless and teachers, that they live together and they learn to live without fossil fuels, they learn to live without waste, and they learn to live without plastic. All those have increased since women have gone to work, since 1970, and it's the fossil fuel curve, it's a hockey stick. And so what we need to start doing is having the hallmarks, to learn the hallmarks, to grow food locally. And it's also so important in terms of really being prepared. We need to start growing food. There is a food emergency. There is food insecurity all around, and you start growing food. That's how it's.
Paul Soto, followed by Burpind.
Yeah, Paul Soto from Horseshoe, that was a very thorough, comprehensive report. You showed a lot of synergy from all the different departments of the city, working synergistically to ensure that the role that you have been assigned and that you are fulfilling that, and I appreciate that. However, the, I'm going to challenge the person that stated that it wasn't a big deal for that 99% vaccination rate with the Asians, that that was like, I'll just gloss over that, you guys got to ask me a question. That's unacceptable. That is unacceptable. It was right there, you saw it, and you skated around it. That's disrespectful, because that calls into question that entire report. The entire report right now can be impugned based on that alone. Ask LaCardo. If a person is on the stand and they lie, the entire testimony can be impeached. It's the same thing here. Your disentire can be impeached. Why? Because you glossed over that. Because you glossed over something that you knew was a lie. Hello? Somebody talking when I'm talking? All right, cool. So this is a problem. This is a problem, because it calls into question us being able to trust our government. That's number one. Number two, when you were talking, you attributed, and go back and check it, because I remember everything. This, what you did is you stated that the Delta variant came from South America. Go back and check it. That's exactly what you said. You said it fast because you weren't paying attention to what you're saying. Okay, but people are listening to these conversations, and they'll hear that. And then all they got to do, because that's exactly the way Trump was signaling with the coronavirus, attributing it to the Chinese. Okay, so what I'm saying is you got to be, you have to be very careful and cognizant of what you're saying, how you're saying it, and the context in which you're saying it, because you're paying attention.
I have three hands up total. I have Blair, followed by Cynthia.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thank you, Tony, for announcing people's names before, a few names before speaking. Thank you for this item and for everybody speaking. On my previous item, 2.14, it was about, you know, how we're going to practice Zoom practices. They've been allowed to continue through January of next year. So I felt I could speak about the concepts of what we can expect of ourselves this fall and into January of next year. January of next year is when LA County, or at least the city of LA, is asking to consider a vaccine mandate for its schoolchildren. You know, good luck to ourselves. There is a lot I don't understand. And just thank you for your patience in hearing myself speak about things. I try my best to offer a small, limited portion of a very large world. I didn't understand that, you know, there's going to be variants coming back into California possibly this fall. And we do have to, I know very much worry about fall in general. I've tried to make clear that, you know, I hope this fall can be a time that we just get to grow more comfortable with the vaccine process and what exactly that is going to be happening with that in our lives, with the technology we use. How can we learn to have a more open conversation about that? I think that to develop those forms of trust is the only way to go. It can unite the community and how we talk about issues together. We're at kind of a turning point in how to talk about these things. I hope we continue the efforts to be constructive with each other and open. And good luck, really good luck how we do that. It's really important. Thank you.
Cynthia C., followed by Roma Dawson. Okay, I'm going to come back to Cynthia and move on to Roma Dawson.
Mayor and Council, I just want to express my gratitude to city staff. I didn't plan to speak, but I was absolutely overwhelmed by the staggering amount of work presented in that slide presentation. And I hope I can figure out how to download it, because I want to share it with a lot of other people. And just please accept my gratitude for all you're doing for those less fortunate than me. And as I sit here in my air-conditioned home, I am thinking of all the people that you have helped and saved them, literally saved them. So thank you.
Cynthia. Cynthia, you're unmuted, so I don't know if there's a problem with your microphone. Okay, back to council.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, we'll go to council for questions. First, I just wanted to say a big thank you to the entire city team and to many partners, really starting with the county, Santa Clara, and their public health department. Our vaccination rates are reflective of their work, the work of the city, the work of our many nonprofit partners, everybody working together. And it's astounding that we are so far in front of so many other large cities. It's really a testament to how our communities pull together in this really tough time. Naturally, of course, Nolan, you know, I'm sorry, excuse me, Nolan, you know that I was going to ask about it, since I know we've had the conversations before. So I just want to clarify, the 92.5 is one shot, is that right?
That is correct. The 92.5 is 12-plus at least one dose.
Okay. And if it was two doses, it would be somewhere in the 80s?
Alvin may have the correct number. He's shaking my head, so that's a yes.
Okay. What I'm trying to figure out here is how we can be so much higher than the rest of the county, given that I think what we tend to see is the more affluent areas tend to be more vaccinated. And we know there's a lot of more affluent towns to our west and to the north, which would suggest those areas in the county, I mean, we'd have to have extremely low vaccination rates in other parts of the county for us to be that much higher than the average in the county. So help me understand that. How can we be so much higher than the rest of the county?
So there are many, there are many layers to that question. The first is, is that the county uses a different and proprietary source of data for their countywide population. So we use the American Community Survey that shows our population and our breakdown by population by city and by age. That is calculated one way. The county, when they calculate the county number, they actually use a proprietary dataset that's different than ours. So that actually includes some discrepancies in the data. What we do is we have broken down, you know, by actually by every city in the county and then every location in the city, what their providers have told them are the people who live in those locations and what they filled out for their residency, right? And the number, and our data. So when we actually do the calculations, it shows some discrepancies in the data, and that's one of the things we want to continue to work with them on. But we've actually taken every piece of data that they use, and we've analyzed the source of it and made sure there's no translation or errors in translation in the middle. And those are how those numbers come up. So we're going to continue to work with them on those numbers. But when it comes to the city of San Jose, this is literally Kaiser, the county hospitals, the summit, Stanford, anything that has San Jose in, it filled out in the residency when they got that vaccination, that goes up and that's that number. And we divide it by the American Community Survey number for our population, and that's the percentage we come up with.
And we get that data ultimately from the state in terms of the?
So the, so the...
My understanding is the vaccination data has to go to the state first before it comes back down to the locals, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. So if we're wrong, we can blame it on them.
I mean, it's, if we, if we look, every city in the United States pretty much universally uses the American Community Survey.
Okay.
So the main discrepancy you're going to see, maybe to make it a little more simpler, is the county numbers you see on the portal.
Yeah.
For like the, was it 88 points? The 80, they're currently at 88.4.
Right.
They are calculating that number based on a dataset that most other cities don't use as their source of data, right? They have a number that their finance department says, this is what we believe to be the total population in the county, including non-incorporated areas, and it is not the summation of all the cities in the American Community Survey, right? And so that's the way they describe the major difference between like how they calculate a county percentage number and how the rest of the cities are calculated.
Okay. Thank you, Dolan, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and as you also know, Mayor, the Kaiser system, in the month of August, failed to report correctly.
Right.
And that's disclaimed on their website. So these are just a few of the things that we, as not owning any of the data, we don't own the American Community surveys, and we don't own the county proprietary data, and we don't own the hospital and other healthcare data, are dealing with as they calculate these numbers.
Got it.
I can say that the comparison of cities is correct, because every one of those cities uses the American Community Survey to calculate that number.
Okay. Well, that's good, because I just tweeted out that we're number one, so I got to stick to it now. All right, so, yes. I know the most important issue for many of us today is going to be discussed in great length when we talk about eviction moratorium, Jackie. If you want it to put off discussion until that comes up, because I know you spoke briefly about it, I'm happy to put that off into later discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I think, given that we have a full item just on the eviction moratorium, that would be great. And I also just wanted, I wasn't clear on this, we'll be bringing back information on the rental assistance program next week.
Yeah.
And that probably would also be a great time to do a deeper dive in that program. Reagan, who is on a well-deserved vacation, is not here today.
Okay.
And so she has most of the information, so that'd be great.
So that's a fair warning to all of us not to pester you about the rental assistance program today. We will be amply pestering next week when Reagan's back. And Autumn, I just want to say thank you for that great presentation on WIA in particular. I was curious about how the texting technology works. Is it just pick phone numbers, or is it actually geotagged in some way? Because I was actually getting an alert on my phone as I was pedaling my bike past Roosevelt Community Center, and it talked about a clinic that was happening at Roosevelt the next day. And I thought, hey, that's pretty cool. It's a remarkable coincidence, or else this thing is picking up where I am. So what is it?
The emergency alert, and there are people, Daniel Tucker is the detail person on this, so I am not a professional.
Actually, why don't we have Ray Riordan come down and explain how that works? Because it is a very useful tool that we've been using during the pandemic. And as Autumn mentioned, it's actually been quite useful for us.
Ray Riordan, Director of the Office of Emergency Management. The WIA program, Wireless Emergency Alert System, is a federal program through the IPaaS network. It works with all the cellular services in the area. And as Autumn mentioned, there used to be the ability to, with particularly Verizon, to pinpoint where we target that message. So it'll hit the cell towers in that area and set up a geographic map around it and only hit that targeted area.
And so if you happen to have a phone that's in that area, you get hit whether you live there or you live in Seattle.
Correct.
Okay. So that's fantastic. I can remember discussing this program back in 2017 when we really needed it for the flood. I'm glad we got it now. It's great. I know we're going to need it again, unfortunately. So thank you. Thank you very much, Ray. Councilor Sparza.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody. That was a remarkably efficient presentation as well. And now we all know what slide the mayor's going to show in Dayton when he goes to the mayor's conference. And I just wanted to add too, to that discussion was, when I go to the county portal, it's also really interesting that there's usually only about a 5% difference between first and second doses in our county. And that's also very unusual when you look at the statewide data. And I think it also shows, in addition to an election that we had recently, is that most, the vast majority of county and San Jose residents have rejected the politicization of vaccines here. I'm not saying it doesn't happen, because we saw it happen in here, but the majority of folks, just, you know, it's about the science. And somehow, we have been lucky enough through the partnerships that the mayor mentioned and to really keep it focused on keeping people safe. And so I wanted to add my two cents. I think hearing this presentation, folks have gone back to work, kids have gone back to school, and people see things opening back up, but we're still in the mode of saving lives. That's, and that's something we all need to remember. 8.75 million meals during August 2021 is an incredible number. And the need, it shows that the need is great. And for those who, again, as life is opening back up, there's nothing like a global pandemic to teach us how important public service is and how hard the people of the city have worked to keep people alive. So thank you. I also wanted to thank Alvin and the county public health folks. I think we're at a point where we're really, really highly targeting folks, right? The holdouts, or the people that weren't able to do it for one reason or another. And we've done some vaccinations in my district, and what was interesting was how many people walked to the site. And so that's something else that I think we forget too, right? Because buses and all that, there are parts of the city where people, not everyone in the family, or not every adult in the family owns a car, right? So that, the ability to have really highly targeted vaccinations has been helpful. I also wanted to give my feedback on the Wireless Emergency Alert System usage. I've only gotten one complaint, and it was somebody very irate, like saying, that's it, I'm going to forget it. But when you look at the payoff, how many people have participated, had come to a rental assistance pop-up or a vaccination pop-up, because we're using them with vaccinations. To me, it's been very, very effective and worth doing at every point. And so I know we're going to test the patience of some folks, but we're still, this is still about saving lives, so just I ask the public to continue to have some patience on that, because I've seen it be remarkably effective, and in multilingual communities as well. The other thing is, I had a question about vaccination. So there's a temple in my district that has had, when they've done vaccinations, have given out 1,500 at a pop. 1,500 people. We've had our partnership with the Catholic Diocese. Are we looking at partnering, particularly with the evangelical community? I'm thinking of Cathedral of Faith, which had a testing onsite for a while, and I'm not sure what the status is, or Gateway Church, or some of those organizations, to do a place-based faith partnership for a vaccination pop-up? Is that something we're doing more of?
Thank you, council member. We are in communications with the county on identifying additional sites. And so these are sites that I will definitely bring up. If they haven't been discussing it already, I will definitely bring up as options to bring a vaccination site to.
Okay, thank you. I think it would be a great messaging opportunity as well. I won't go into a lengthy discussion on rental assistance, I'm just giving some feedback. I wanted to thank the Housing Department for opening up the Franklin McKinley School District Center, as well as pop-ups. We had a pop-up in my district as well. One of the things, I was out there the other day doing a little video to try and get the word out, and it was just really interesting how steady the usage was. It wasn't, you know, there wasn't like 500 people lined up, thank God, but it was just steady. There were people in four different languages at the pop-up and in three different languages at Franklin McKinley getting assistance. And the whole time we were there, people just kept coming. And so I think that's really important, and we can talk more about that later. I also wanted to give some feedback, because I have encountered a lot of confusion in the community about what rental assistance can be offered, particularly around subleasing, right? Renting a room, the paperwork that is accepted and not accepted. There's still a lot of confusion. And I've had some events where I've invited partners to come and table, and it was kind of interesting that as I was going to the partners and thanking them for coming, some of the partners, who are very active in the community, didn't know much about rental assistance. Fortunately, our Housing Department was there, so I was able to say, hey, like, can you connect up and make sure that these critical partners in the east side understand the rental assistance? rental assistance and why it's so important, especially now? So I just wanted to give some feedback on that. On the food, I have a couple of questions. So I have a concern about some changes that the county is making to their senior nutrition program. As I've been out in the community, I've run into a lot of seniors who are very, very anxious about meals. And how are we talking with the county folks on that? And are we communicating with them? Are we looking at supplementing cuts or changes that they might make? How can we work better with the county, particularly on the senior nutrition program?
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson-Sarrelli, Director of Parks Recreation, Neighborhood Services. I'm not familiar specifically with the changes, so maybe I can follow up with you offline and hear what people are telling you. You know, there's always some cost issues, but we adjust for those typically in the budget as they give us those cost increases. But outside of that, I don't, I'm not certain what you're referring to.
So my understanding is the county is aggregating a lot of food distribution sites into one as opposed to having senior nutrition sites spread out. And a lot of seniors have conveyed their concern. They go to the place that they go to because it works for them, they can get a ride, or it's close to home, or they have some affiliation with the group that's offering them assistance. And so some of these changes is going to effectively cut off their access to food. And I'm happy to talk more about that offline as well, but it's a big concern.
Yeah, definitely I'll follow up on that.
Okay. We had a site in my district, as you know, get abruptly shut down, whether it's temporarily or permanently, we'll see. But it left hundreds of families kind of without their regular place to go, and it brought up some concerns about redundancy and what other food programs. So that's my question. What are we doing around redundancy in food assistance when we see some of our partners super stretched and we obviously want to help them? How are we bringing in other partners to support that?
We're not specifically bringing in any new partners at this point. You know, if there's redundancy in the system, we do want to eliminate it. We are, as you're probably aware, you know, our our long-term plan is to ramp down the food assistance because eventually the federal money runs out. So we are engaged with the county office of ed on, I'm sorry, we are engaged with the county on with our partners in food distribution already, trying to figure out what are we going to do when this money runs out, right? Because we definitely identified a higher food need that we knew was out there, but now we we can, we've got numbers on it. So everybody knows the money's about to run out. And of course, nobody's, nobody, no, the county or us are not putting a lot of money into that food distribution from our general fund perspective. So that's a process, a policy process that's ongoing right now. But specifically to the school you're speaking of, you know, especially the larger distributions that were using school sites for some for more than a year because the kids weren't there, so they were wide open to use. Everybody's returned. It's becoming, as you know, in some cases, quite a logistical nightmare for them to have food distribution and parents picking up kids and all going back and forth. So it's sort of forced a sudden result in the one high school you're familiar with. We think that is mostly stable. We are staying close in contact with it, as I think you're aware, to make sure nobody's falling out of the safety net there in that neighborhood. That may occur in some other neighborhoods at other schools. They've already hinted to us that there is some concern that it's not just that one school where they're, everybody's sort of tripping over each other and it's causing a lot of problems for them. But we wouldn't want them to do that unless they could identify alternate distribution that's close by, right? We don't want to have distribution disappear from an area entirely that's been reliant on it.
Yeah, and and hopefully the communication will improve in the future so that other council members don't have to encounter that same thing.
Yeah, that was a pretty sudden one for all of us, I think, unfortunately.
Yeah, and hopefully it doesn't happen again. I had a last question about volunteers. It's a consistent refrain from any of the nonprofits that we partner with, whether it's food or rental assistance or whatever it is, that they're desperate for volunteers. Is what are you, what are you hearing and how are we planning for the ramp-ups in winter?
Specific to food?
Well, we can go with food.
Yeah, I can speak with food. Others can speak to other areas of volunteerism. So, you know, we are, we are ensuring, for example, at Second Harvest, that the core will continue to be funded to continue box. As I mentioned, we'll have an ask in front of you on November 2nd, where we've extended all of our current contracts through the end of the calendar year, and we expect to extend it into the third quarter through through March at least. So we'll, we'll hear about that in the November 2nd. I mentioned the 1.2 million or so that we'll need to be able to do that. So for right now, that's the plan to get us through there. We're in close contact with County Office of Ed around what will those needs be during the break? You know, as as most of you are probably aware, schools now basically get universal meals for the kids, so that helps while schools in session. But it's not clear to us what's going to happen during the break, so we're preparing for that to be able to ramp up if needed.
And so how are we going to need volunteers for that or no?
I would suspect so, yes.
So are we, Dolan, you look like you have.
Yeah, so council member, Dolan Beckel, interim deputy city manager, got it right for change. So actually, I just finished a conversation yesterday with Kira Kazantis at Silicon Valley Council Nonprofits, who's noticing, what I think everyone is noticing, is just the lack of labor, the labor shortage out in the market, whether it be volunteers or Conservation Corps for the for for food boxing. And so we are working on the fact where we probably need to look at another call for volunteers from Silicon Valley Strong for the Silicon Valley Council nonprofits to continue in their role to help manage that channel and volunteer in the right places. But I think that the message, so we are taking some actions early as conversations last night, real time, that some people haven't heard of. But but everyone is challenged, and so I think we're going to definitely need to start very soon the call for volunteers as we go into fall and the winter season and we see that typical peak in food insecurity, whatever that might be. So we are looking at that and realizing we need to take some action soon. And we'll probably be working with the mayor's communications office and council of nonprofits and other partners to to get that volunteer channel built up in addition to things like looking at the Afghan refugee population that's coming to the Bay Area and seeing if we can tap that into the San Jose Conservation Corps to bolster some of their numbers as well. So you're right, it's a, it's a challenge, and the challenge is going to continue to increase as we go into the winter, so we're trying to get ahead of that.
Thank you. And I know I said that was last, but this is really last. I just, I'm going to restate my concern about sick leave expiring, the business credits expiring at the federal level and then expiring at the state level as we go into winter. And so my hope as mayor, as I know you advocate for us all the time, is maybe we can get some information. Maybe there are discussions being had now, even though they haven't emerged in the legislative process. But it's a big, big concern, especially as we're already seeing labor shortage. Are people not going to feel supported? Are they not going to want to do these things if if they don't feel that they can take time off to recover from COVID or care for a loved one? That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. Really good presentation. I appreciate the update, and it's actually alarming to really hear the number of meals that we're, we continue to deliver, but I'm grateful that we're there delivering them. I wanted to dig into the vaccination rates a little bit. It sounds like there's, you know, it's kind of how accurate they are, I'm not going to dispute or discuss that. I want to understand the demographics of the numbers. So when I look at the different populations, white 70.5, black 70.6, Latinos 72.9, and Asians 96.9, do we have a read on what age group is involved in any in those numbers? Particularly, I'm particularly concerned, not the Asian because their numbers are so high, but the other populations. What, what, what age group are we missing in in vaccinations? And then how are we targeting them?
Thank you, Councilmember Foley. Alvin Lang, Vaccination Task Force Director. So my understanding of the data that we get from the county accounts for those that are currently eligible to receive their vaccinations, which is 12 and up. When we're looking at the demographics or the specific, I guess, numbers where there's still a need, it's in the Latino, Latina, Latinx population between 12 and 17. And those are, I believe it's roughly 50% of that population has been vaccinated.
Of the 12 to 17 in the Latino population?
Yes.
Do we have, thank you, that's, that's helpful. So I suspect that that number, I don't know if that number is high or low for other populations, but do you have that percentage for the white population and the black population? I'm just understanding or trying, what I'm looking for is how do we target that, if it's, if it's that population, how do we target them? How do we get vaccines to them? And knowing that that age group cannot make the decision on their own to get vaccinated, they need their parents to approve their vaccination, and the hesitancy may not be from the student, the the 12 to 17-year-old, it may be from the parent. So do we have that data? And if if we don't, it might be helpful for us to understand it to, in order for us to target that population?
Yes, thank you, council member. We do have that data, and I can get those numbers for you.
Okay. And then how are we pursuing the 12 to 17-year-old population?
Again, taking the county's lead, trying to complement and supplement how they are going to be reaching out to those youth, particularly, like you said, the 12 to 17, whether it's through social media, whether it's through their channels, TikTok, Facebook, Instagram, those types of things. Our communications folks are developing plans on how to, like I said, supplement and complement how the county is reaching out to that particular population.
Yeah, and Councilmember Foley, I think we just got some insights on Thursday or Friday from the county about how they're handling the children under 12 vaccinations in general. And so we didn't have time to incorporate that here because they really just started rolling it out to us last week. I mean, the good news is they've got dedicated pediatric, they're bringing dedicated pediatric clinics online that focus on children and families. They're bringing, I think they're almost double the number of retail locations that families can go to. They're working on the communications plan, and we'll get connected into that. But they are just rolling that out as we speak. And so I think it'd be, we'd be premature to provide insights at this update, at the next update, we'll definitely be able to provide a lot more information on that.
Okay, thank you. That I, I think that's the the age group that is currently being missed. Although when I have events in my district and we talk about vaccinations, that's not the population who's complaining loudest to me about being vaccinated. So how, so we are, you're saying that we're supplementing any marketing, for want a better word, that the county is doing in relation? And are we, so we're letting them take the lead. Should we take the lead at our high schools and our middle schools throughout the San Jose, 19 of them?
Yeah.
To make sure that we're either assisting the school districts or or there to help them with the messaging?
I can jump in here. I think one of the things that we tried to do with the county around messaging is we offered our behavioral insights team to the county and did a working group with them. And one of the most interesting things was people were, I don't want to say fed up, they were confused and aggravated with conflicting messaging. That was really a nuisance in our ability to push people to not just vaccination, but also just services that the county or the city were providing. And so through that effort, we really let the county take a lead on messaging. And then who we target and how we target, we try and be complimentary. And so Carolina and her team will meet with the county and divide and conquer, but use the same messaging. And really, you know, the tactics will differ depending on who we're going after. And so that's been our approach around vaccination. You know, we've partnered with the county on, you know, the the 12 to 17 demographic and the high schools. There was a very large campaign, which I remember we all learned what Bad Bunny was and and pushing some of our teenagers to get vaccinated. So we've been offering concerts at SAP and a variety of other avenues. But I will say, I definitely think it's important that it's a partnership and a collaborative partnership, but that we let the county take the lead on the actual messaging because we don't want to confuse our our residents.
Okay. I appreciate that. We, we need to get the word out, of course, to our younger kids, but there's still a a large population that is of age who could get the vaccination, who are choosing not to get to the, get the vaccination, and I'm not sure how we ever reach them. Kind of a rhetorical statement.
Yeah, we agree, Councilmember Foley. And I'm meeting with Dr. Dewan on Thursday, and there's two items on the agenda, winter feeding and vaccination for youth.
Great.
And so point taken, and and we'll continue to have Dr. Dewan and the county health experts and Carolina's team hooked up at the waist, which is we're just beginning the rollout of that communication on the vaccines for the kids.
Great, because that's, it's extremely important that we get to that population as well in if we're going to fight this pandemic. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, are there questions? Comments? Councilmember Menas.
Yeah, sorry, didn't get a chance to push my button. Just a question came, came to my mind is hearing, obviously, a lot of information. Thank you so much for the work. The question that came to mind is how, so obviously, we get those presentations, we see this information, which, you know, oftentimes, including this time, it's eye-opening. I think it's valuable information that folks can sort of glean a lot of things from. How, how aware of this information do you think internal staff at the city is, like the employees within all the departments? And the reason I'm asking is obviously there's, it's no one to surprise that there's an effort to try to get as many employees vaccinated as possible. And I'm curious if they're, if they have this information in front of them, if they get presented with some of this information, especially as it relates to the, the, the vaccine and the mutations and things of that nature and the, just the trends and such. And I'm, and the reason I ask that, because I wonder if that would help sort of speed along some of the acceptance of the vaccine if they were privy to some of this information. And I, and I understand, before you answer, there's obviously discussions taking place in closed session about some of this stuff. So I also want to be sort of thoughtful and delicate to anything that needs to be discussed elsewhere, but.
Understood.
Something that came to mind.
You know, I think all of the, the science that we learn with our partners, we've been, you know, since the beginning of the pandemic, we've been able to share with our employees, whether it's working from home and staying safe, the testing we offered, and also now vaccination programs. And and started, you know, this week with employee vaccinations. And obviously, a great many of our employees were able to go through the, the county sites early on. So we definitely share information with them as much as possible through employee, all employee emails, department directors, like the one sitting in front of me, email their staff regularly about this. But Councilmember Foley and Councilmember Sparza's earlier comment, the, this last view is difficult. It doesn't seem to, the, the data and the science is a driving factor in some of the decision-making.
Okay, yeah, I recognize that as we get into higher numbers, it's, it's more difficult to move the needle, but, okay, thank you for the information. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start out just by thanking you, all of you. And it takes half of the, this room in terms of the leadership, but I know that you're not alone. You represent a whole department of people who have been very committed and dedicated to our community, so I just want to thank you. So I just want to thank you. Thank you so much for, for the everyday work that you do. This was a really good report. I, I was really pleased to see that we're getting closer in terms of, and I'm looking for that slide, the vaccination da, dashboard. I know there's some difference between what the county has and what we're reporting. I'm not going to get into that. But I really enjoyed hearing that Carolina is really coordinating with our county counterparts with messaging. And so one of the questions I had, because Latinos, blacks and whites seem to be on, kind of on the same page in terms of, of vaccination percentages, what is the, what is the, the strategy for, for the white community versus black and Latino? Is there something actively being done? I, I know that I typically ask about the Latino community and, and people of color, black and brown. But I think, I can't remember who it was that said that there was some, some segments of their community that are boisterous or loud about vaccination.
Yeah. Good question, Councilmember. Carolina Camarena, Director of Communications, City Manager's Office. So let me begin by answering your question. Our message for our Latinx, Latin, Latina, Latino community is very much family based. So we did do some testing very early on in COVID and we found that that's what resonated the best.
Yeah.
And not only will you see that in the message, you'll also see that in the imagery. What we found out in working with our Black African ancestry community nonprofit groups is that they have a real mistrust of the medical profession and of government. So the best way to reach our Black African ancestry community is through our trusted partners with Autumn spoke about very eloquently. So we've been working with a group of African American, Black community servant agencies. And we're amplifying their messages as Autumn had spoken. And with our white Caucasian community, we're simply providing the information. We haven't done too much testing, but we're happy to go back and do that as well.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I, I appreciate the breakdown. What is the messaging that works with the white Caucasian community? Has anything been tested on that?
We, we've not done any testing on that up to this point. We were very much focused in reaching our marginalized, non-English speaking communities. And most of the testing we did was to ensure that our most affected communities were being reached. But we're happy to take that back and come back with a report on that.
Yes. I, I have seen like TikTok and, you know, all that stuff, but, but some really cool messaging, kind of fighting against some of the misinformation by very trusted voices, obviously, you know, local doctors and, and public health nurses. And I just thought that was a really kind of different. And, and it was, and it was a little sassy. It was a little sarcastic. It wasn't like, you know, this is a PSA and very formal. And I think that kind of relaxed messaging, you know, might resonate with some folks. It might be very down to earth kind of messaging. But, you know, of course, you, you are all the experts in that area. I, I don't know, but I, I know that it is actually lower than, than Latino, Latinas. And so, you know, I'm the voice, I'm the voice advocacy for, for all, all the groups that are falling behind. And so I don't want that to be one of the groups that get left behind. So I really appreciate it. Carolina, I know that you, since you started, but you've been running with this. And so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome.
I, I think the mayor should TikTok more often.
Tweeting, not TikToking.
We're trying to reach a demographic.
Yeah.
But, but anyways, it, it's all, you know, trying to figure out what works for our community, right? So we can get that to a 90, which would be really wonderful. So I'm going to move on to my other questions. I know that we talked a little bit about, and I think it was Councilmember, I was just going to say Peralas, Asparza. Councilmember Asparza talked about redundancy in some of the services. And so one of the things that, that I, I know that, that our county folks do very well is the public health nurses and their home visitation. And that network of like trusted people that can get into our community rather quickly. And are we investing, expanding in that? Are we helping them with that? Or are we, I guess I'm wondering, what kind of a system are we setting up that is equivalent to that, that we can sustain and carry on even beyond the pandemic? Although pandemic seems to be dragging on and on. What, what is the, the future in terms of reaching our, our public, our hardest to reach audiences?
Yeah. So Dolan Beck, also Councilmember Menas, want to clarify, were you specific on food or the broader public health system?
All, all of this, all of the services, really it's, it's, I think it's, it's a thing that I've brought up before. And I apologize if I'm repetitive, but, but one of the things I'm most concerned about is that the people who need the service the most are the ones that we capture at the very end. They're not the first ones that, we don't target those folks first. Which is, I think, in terms of an equity based model, it's not one that works for us. It's not working. And so one of the things that I've noticed with the county is that they've invested like in the promotoras model. I think that's partly why there is some success. They have a great public health nurse outreach program. I'm sure they did their part as well. These are, you know, medical representatives that are in the field and that can speak very, can articulate a lot, many different reasons why people should get vaccinated. So I don't know what we have, and I'm not saying that we need a public health nurse, but we need some, some arm of, of the, the city that can outreach and connect with our families rather quickly. And we don't have that network. So I'm wondering, is, is this something that, that we thought of? Not individually everybody doing something separately, because that's duplication, right? That's not being very effective. And so if we, we had a core group of folks, I talked to Kip about this in earlier, gosh, I don't even know when I saw him last. With this pandemic time, I'm not sure. But, but we talked about an ongoing outreach program that could work for our hardest to reach. Have, are we there yet in terms of this? When will we be there?
Yeah, so there's probably a few different working streams. And, and obviously, you know, we've gained a lot of experience over the last 18 months in the EOC. And unfortunately, with the services, fortunately and unfortunately, with the services we've provided along with the county, it's put us in touch with the people who most need it. And so we definitely have scrambled to keep that contact information, but also not lose sight of those people. And so I think, you know, it was discussed a little bit in MBA 16, but the need to funnel that engagement with those folks, you know, in a, in a continued matter so that we're constantly engaging them, not just on something specific like a pandemic, but just overall, so we better understand needs. But then funnel that into the recovery process. And as Rosalyn mentioned last week with the task force, how are we really supporting families and working with them? And then also small businesses that are going to employ a lot of those families, right? And so I think that's our, our trick over the next few months, is to really build that bridge from the response to the recovery. And, and some of that has slowed down as we've needed to continue to respond, but we've still been in contact with people. And so that's something that I think, whether through the recovery process or these additional 3.1s, we can circle back and be a little bit more purposeful about, because it is something that we're, we're striving to achieve very purposefully, about staying in contact with those, these, this community who's suffered so much over the last 18 months.
Thank you so much, Lee. And I'd like to see that magic trick that you're working on. I don't know how that, that, that would look, but I imagine that it's something like you mentioned. It's a prolonged, it's a relationship that continues to be fed throughout the year, that continues to maybe bring in those folks for some of the other services that we have, like scholarships for our recreation preschool or for, you know, some of the great programs that Jill has in her library that they may not know about. Or, you know, just any, just a myriad of things. And so I think we, we have to be, we, we can't wait anymore where this is 18 months later. And, and we still don't really have a core outreach structure that can easily tap into those hardest to reach communities. And we're all in it and we're all going to help. But, but doing that sometimes is a duplication of services is not as effective. And so that's one of the things that I'm looking forward to. Hearing from, from our city manager's office is how are we going to continue to sustain these outreach efforts beyond the pandemic, within this pandemic? And then beyond, because that's part of having an equitable, equity based response. Because those are the folks that need the services. And, and even if they, it takes a lot more resources to connect with them, they are the, the primary customers. Anyways, those are my questions. I really appreciate, I know that you've given it a lot of thought, Lee. I know we've, we've talked about this in the past. And so I hope that by maybe the next report, we can have something more firm and that can last for, for a really long time, because we shouldn't have to lean on our county counterparts for all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? All right. Thanks, everybody, for all the information, the excellent work. Okay, we're going to move forward to item. There was a request, reasonable request, and it came from Councilmember Peralas, that we accelerate item 3.5. I know we've had several people waiting for it because we're going to have a timed certain item coming pretty quickly. And so I'm going to do that. 3.5, the adoption resolution apologizing to Chinese immigrants and their descendants. And I don't believe there's a staff presentation, but I know you brought the memorandum.
We have some, we have some opening comments.
There is, okay, great. Wonderful. Welcome, Soma.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Soma Masial, I'm the Director of the Office of Racial Equity. And joining me is the Immigrant Affairs Manager, Chris Cambisis, on the left. So this item, the resolution is in response to council direction to staff from the May 2015 council meeting to return with the resolution apologizing for the past destruction of Chinatown. The resolution was requested by Councilmember Peralas as part of the adoption of the anti-Asian hate crime strategies by council. This resolution offers a comprehensive acknowledgement and formal apology for the city's past role, not only in the destruction of the second Market Street Chinatown, but also the systemic racism and xenophobia that characterized official city policies and actions towards the Chinese community. The resolution apologizes to Chinese immigrants and their descendants for the role of the city of San Jose in systemic and institutional racism, acknowledging acts of fundamental injustice, recognizing the contributions and resilience of the Chinese community, and resolving to rectify the lingering consequences of past discriminatory policies. The Office of Racial Equity, and in particular Chris Cambisis, drafted this resolution with significant support and contribution of community stakeholders, local leaders and historians, including Connie Yang Yu of the Chinese Historical Society of America and a local historian and author of Chinatown, San Jose, USA, and Jerry Wong, co-founder of the Chinese Historical and Cultural Project and the Chinese American Historical Museum at History Park, and co-author of Chinese in San Jose and Santa Clara Valley. Acknowledging and apologizing for the city's actions and committing to city, the city to rectifying the lingering consequences of discriminatory policies and institutional racism towards this community and beyond at a time of rising hate crimes targeting Asian and Pacific Islander communities is extremely important. This resolution also serves as a recognition of the immense contributions of the Chinese community in San Jose to fostering reconciliation and friendship, which has been reflected in the ongoing work of the organizations such as the Chinese Historical and Cultural Project and the Chinese American Historical Museum in History Park. I'd also like to note that there will be a ceremony to mark the adoption of this historic city council resolution tomorrow. And that would be, that will be tomorrow at 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock in the Circle of Palms Plaza across from Cesar Chavez Park. And with that, I thank you for the opportunity to present this item.
Thank you, Soma. Councilmember Peralas, would you like to speak or should we go to the public first? Okay, why don't we ask members of the community to speak? We'll start with those who are here in the audience.
Yeah, I have three cards. Nancy Tao, Jerry Wong, and Connie Young.
Welcome. If you could just come forward as, and everyone has two minutes to speak.
So again, that's Nancy, Jerry, and Connie. Just come down to the microphone.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Jerry Key Wong. And I'm standing before you, city council members, in memory of my dad, Bill Key, who in 1947 came before the city council of that time, representing the Chinese community, to pleefer the saving from the demolishment of the historic Ng Shing Gung Temple, which was the last standing building in the final Chinatown of that era. He was granted a short reprieve of three years, but sadly, we moved away. And without him as the spokesman for this dwindling immigrant community, the city did tear down the building. So all was lost of the last standing remaining remnant of the Chinatown in 1950. So here I am, 70 years later, asking you to make amends for this just one of many wrongdoings that the city of San Jose and the former city council members thrust upon the San Jose immigrant communities from 1888 to 1940s, when I was growing up here in San Jose. I spent my childhood years here in San Jose, and although it was after, I'm not that old. It was after the incidents of 1888 listed in the resolution. I did experience some fear because I was forced to wear an "I am a Chinese American" button when I was forced to wear that during the anti-Japanese hate years of World War II. So I am proud to tell my dad up there and you city council members that in 1987, 100 years after the failed, ill-fated fire that I helped form the Chinese Historical and Cultural Project that rebuilt the historic Ng Shing Gung Temple. And with pride, we presented it to the city of San Jose in 1991 as a token of friendship from the Chinese community to be placed in your history, San Jose Park. So in recognition of this ongoing friendship and acknowledgement of the city's past unjust actions, I ask that you city council members today take the step forward to adopt this long-needed resolution of apology, which will be a significant part of today's Chinese American history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Welcome.
I'll be very short. My name is Nancy Tao. I'm a resident of San Jose. I'm here is to say thank you to Councilman, Mr. Peralas, for initiating this resolution, to say sorry for, to the Chinese communities that, for the wrongdoings in the past. And I hope this resolution will be adopted, hopefully unanimously. And I'm hoping that the city resolution will be adopted, hopefully unanimously. And I'm hoping that the city council will continue to work with the communities to, for equal, for equality in economics and for social justice for everybody, not just for some, but for everyone. Thank you.
I'm Connie Young Yu, a descendant of people who lived in two Chinatowns in San Jose. I'm glad for this resolution stating the city's responsibility for policies leading to the burning of the Market Street Chinatown and its cruel attempts to stop the Chinese from rebuilding their community. The resolution apologizes for past wrongs and resolves to go forward toward a better society for all. I was a historical consultant on three Chinatown archaeology projects, for the Caltrans Woolen Mills Chinatown excavation, for the digs in Highlandville in 2008, and on the Market Street Chinatown project at Stanford. All were very personal experiences, as I felt I knew the people who lived there, of their hopes and dreams of lives that were destroyed. My grandfather never expressed bitterness for the hardships he and his kin suffered during and from the Market Street Fire. But I felt all these years anger, a gnawing sense of injustice, and something unresolved until now. A weight is lifted from my shoulders, and I'd like to say it was a superb experience working with Chris Cambisus and all of council members, Peralas, I'm sorry, councilmen, Peralas' staff on the apology resolution. And I am very grateful and very proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Okay, moving to Zoom, I have four hands up, Brenda Ki Wong, followed by Stephen Luoh.
Good afternoon, Mayor Liccardo and council members. I am Brenda Ki Wong, a past president and current member of the Board of Directors of the Chinese Historical and Cultural Project, CHCP. As a docent at the Chinese American Historical Museum and Chair of the Student Ambassador Program, I share about the five Chinatowns of San Jose, why they were established, and who were the people who lived there. Sadly, in sharing of San Jose's Chinatowns and the Chinese across America in general, I need to tell that the Chinese experienced historic racism, became scapegoats of the economic times and victims of violent acts, often fatal. Their Chinatowns were burned down. I also share that despite these acts of discrimination and the 1882 Chinese Exclusion Act, our Chinese forefathers suffered, but also persevered and contributed greatly to agriculture, horticulture, and industry. Chin Sin built and operated San Jose's Garden City cannery, employing hundreds of Chinese. The Chinese since San Jose's early days of incorporation sacrificed, persevered, and succeeded to empower themselves, their families, and their community. In your personal, professional, and civic leadership roles, you have come to know more about the Chinese, those past and present, and their contributions amidst their struggles, and thereby has led you to propose today's council resolution apologizing to Chinese immigrants and their descendants for acts of fundamental injustice and committing to rectify past policies and misdeeds. In working with CHCP's youth program, I always try to impart to the students that they should do as our forefathers did. Never give up, never give in, never give out, keep the faith and keep your eyes on the prize. Thank you for introducing this resolution to Remember the Chinese.
Stephen, followed by Raymond.
Hi, my name is Stephen Luoh, and I'm a high school senior in District Eight and a volunteer at the Chinese American Historical Museum. Every time I step inside the museum, I'm reminded of the long embattled history of the Chinese community in America. We've come a long way since the Chinese Exclusion Act and the exploitation of Chinese workers while building railroads. And I acknowledge that it's not easy to acknowledge past wrongdoings, and I really want to thank the council for taking up this resolution. Thank you.
Raymond, followed by Tessa.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, my name is Raymond Lu. I grew up in the San Jose area and a second-generation Chinese. I'm the son of Lee and George Chen, who are volunteers with CHCP. But I grew up somewhat just naive to some of these acts that happened to some of our ancestors and forefathers. And I think it's important as a, as a society, that we acknowledge some of these acts in an act of being able to prevent them from happening in the future to, you know, future Chinese, Asians, or any other races. And so I just am really proud of the city for bringing this up, even though it is long past. But I just think being able to acknowledge it and being able to use this to educate future generations to be active in their community and prevent future occurrences like this is really important. So just want to really thank everyone for coming together to put this together. Thank you.
Tessa Woodman-Chee, followed by Paul Soto.
Oh, thank you, Tessa Woodman-Chee. Yes, thank you for this recognition of our Chinese neighbors. It's wonderful that you're doing that, to really understand that, you know, it has been, for some reason, the timer went away, exploiting of our, of our neighbors and our people, exploiting people and nature for profit. And along with the Chinese, there's a long history of other cultures that have been destroyed, you know, and have been not appreciated. And we, I talked to my girlfriend, who's half Afro-American and Latina, and, you know, she feels that the Black people have been not appreciated, you know. So there's so much history that we have to apologize for and go forward and not, you know, we're even seeing it in COVID in terms of our essential workers, that, you know, we are, we, you know, are, they're not being treated well. You know, we haven't, you know, that's capitalism that exploits people and nature for profit. And so we have to take that into all of our activities. And the other group, of course, is the Native Americans. And there's a wonderful Native American that is up in, you know, trying to fight the pipeline, you know, and they're putting their lives on the line. And these are, you know, we have to start prioritizing people and nature over profit. That really has to come, that has to be our new model. That's what the transformational change is, that climate change is demanding, that we degrow and focus on public health, focus on each other, loving each other, caring for each other. That is how we have to go forward. And otherwise, we will lose. Our species is scheduled for extinction, along with six million others at this time. We're in the sixth great, sixth great mass extinction.
Paul, followed by caller 5140.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. First of all, I'd like to extend my gratitude and privilege to be able to share this moment with my, with my Chinese elders and the Chinese community. During my research, I had come across a lot, a copious amount of information. And I was, I was astounded that Lehman Stanford and Peter Burnett, whom we had celebrated, whom he acquired the largest, Lehman Stanford is the largest landowner in Santa Clara County. There's no one in this county that has more private land in their hands, except Lehman Stanford. And, and, and that wealth was acquired by the institution of these policies that now we are apologizing, and it is just. And I extend my gratitude to you, Councilman Peralas, for doing this. It is just. However, Pung Chi, who was the, he was a, was a Chinese immigrant that spoke to the council, to the Congress in 1870, said thusly, "When we were first favored with the invitations of your ship captains to immigrate to California and heard the logations, which they published, of the perfect and admirable character of your institutions, and were told of your exceeding respect and love toward the Chinese, we could hardly have calculated that we would now be the objects of your excessive hatred. Bet your courts would refuse us the right of testimony, your legislature loaded us with increasing taxes, and devised means how to wholly expel us," end quote. That was Pung Chi in 1870. Now, this is, this, the rectification and the reconciliation is good and it's just, and I'm glad that I am experiencing it. There is a Chicano from Salsicuelas. Where's ours?
Caller 5140, followed by Blair Beekman.
Yeah, I would hope you have something at History Park for any, any immigrant group that has contributed, which every immigrant group has. But more importantly, I think we have to look at what's happening now. And that's a lot of crimes against Asian Americans that kind of get swept under the rug. And it all has to do with a police force that doesn't want to have to do it or budget for it. And more importantly, it's on a county level, DA don't want to prosecute people who are assaulting Asian people, and I find that very wrong. And I think, you know, along with plaques and all these nice things, it's great, but we've got to focus on what's now. We can't help what happened in the past. And I can tell you, there's a lot of bad people who came out of Stanford University, a guy by the last name of Jordan Termon. They were all eugenicists who wanted to sterilize people, including Asian Americans, Eastern Europeans. We have a bad history. We have a very sinister history here. Paul Soto doesn't talk about it enough. Margaret Sanger Planned Parenthood, they were all together, Theodore Roosevelt, Henry Ford, we'd go on and on, of people who wanted to, and they did, they sterilized Native Americans, Asians, Eastern, Southern Europeans, African Americans. But it's hard to do when you have a powerhouse like Stanford University. People don't want to touch that because it's, you know, it's like some kind of sacred cow. But yeah, I really feel that it would be nice to honor the Chinese Americans that came before us, along with the Italian Americans. You know, maybe we should put another statue in City Hall. I know Columbus bothered a lot of people, but maybe we could put somebody else in there, not Sam Liccardo, that's for sure. But as an Italian American, we're being erased out of here, I could tell you. You know, I mean, people.
The final speaker, Blair Beekman.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman here. I first started attending, oh, there's a sirens going by at this time, move to another part of my abode here. Back in 2015, I first started attending city council meetings, and there was an important park that was developed by someone, and it was put in North San Jose. And it was to commemorate, I think, had something to do to commemorate the events of, of the burnings of downtown. And if not, it certainly was on my mind, and I felt it was very commemorative to myself. And so it's, I thank you for this, this item today. It's nice to hear different parts of the community being able to have a voice about a really bad past in this country. Interestingly, you know, we still address the, the sort of items very matter-of-factly in the same ways that it hurts that we do. And I hope we can learn how to make this, this sort of topic matter open, and we really just talk it out and figure out good solutions. It doesn't have to be hostile, but there is a peaceful direction of our future we could be going to. Good luck how we can all work towards that. With that all said, to move into the present, just a quick thank you, and good luck to people of ACI and how they can discuss ideas of the upcoming Economic Forum on COVID issues with, in San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peralas.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for hearing this item out of order and a little bit earlier, as we had a couple of members, as you saw, of the public that have been waiting for hours. So I appreciate that and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you as well, Zuma and Chris, for your work in Office of Racial Equity. Truly appreciate the work you've put in. Have heard a lot of positive feedback, and especially out of this project, as you heard from our public speakers too. So thank you for your work on this. I want to thank Jerry Wong and Connie Young Yu as well for coming out, Nancy as well, and our public speakers that spoke, really for the work that you've put in, not only on this particular effort, but, but really over the decades, and appreciate your participation. And thank you for your words today that are what's making it all worth it, honestly. This is, in my mind, a profound moment, not only for our Chinese community, but for our city. And contrary to belief, this is not actually our first time acknowledging our mistakes to the Chinese community, as I was recalled by Mayor McHenry and Mayor Liccardo was able to make contact with him in 1987, as we led an apology, our council did then, at that time with Councilmember Susan Hammer, in an apology on the 100th anniversary of the Market Street Chinatown fire. And there is a plaque there in the Fairmont Hotel to honor that. But we have not done a formal resolution, and this will be that formal effort and resolution that can span the test of time as we move forward. And as we know, the importance of knowing our history, and certainly as the decades move on, it will be important to continue to recall this effort, both with the plaque that sits there in the Fairmont, but as well with this, this resolution. I myself, as a son of an immigrant, understand full well the hurt and trauma that comes with facing bigotry, with facing discrimination, hatred, and racism. And that's earlier this year, as we had a lot of anti-Asian hate crimes that were happening not only here in San Jose, but throughout our community. I was proud to be able to move forward with some efforts, along with our Office of Racial Equity, to have listening sessions and to be able to develop strategies on how we, as a city, could participate better. This is one of those efforts that really came from a lot of those conversations and was presented to us. And I think it's, it's an opportunity for us here to pass this resolution as a council and to be able to personally speak to our Chinese community. And for myself personally, as the downtown representative, where all five of the former Chinatowns once stood, to be able to say sorry for, to our community for what they have endured, and that we are committed to continue to build a better future for all immigrants here in San Jose. And I do want to close by inviting all my colleagues, as you've heard from Zuma, to be able to participate tomorrow as we can present, present this in the Circle of Palms there, where the original Market Street Chinatown once stood. So with that, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember, for bringing this forward. Councilmember Foley.
Councilmember Peralas, I just wanted to thank you for your vision and inspiration in bringing this forward. This is righting a wrong that has existed for a couple hundred years, and I really appreciate your efforts and acknowledge that this is just a step to apologize to the Chinese community for horrible things that were done, and hopefully shows that we stand in solidarity with our Asian community now and going forward, and helping to protect them during, as the increase in Asian hate crimes has, continues to go up. So with that, I was really pleased to second the motion. I stand wholeheartedly behind this, this apology, and I thank the Chinese community for being here and being gracious in waiting so long for us to apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to...
I wanted to thank the community members that came. Connie Young, I tried to write the folks down who had come. You know what? Instead of getting it wrong, I'm just going to look at you and say thank you for coming and representing your families. It is so important for us as elected officials to acknowledge some of the damage that past policies have done. We inherit some of these past policies, and if we don't change them, then we're part of the problem as well. And that's part of the reason why we have an Office of Race Inequity, so we can make sure that whatever policies were held in the past that created a systemic racism and created these inequities for the Chinese community, for the Japanese community that you mentioned earlier, and for many more. But it's important to apologize, and so this is, this is part of that process so that we can have some resolution with the hurt and damage that you've seen, you witnessed your parents and you witnessed your grandparents go through. And so Mother Teresa says it is by forgiving, forgiving that one is forgiven. And so on behalf of past council members, and I think it was Mayor Bray Fogel who led a lot of the damage against Chinese Americans in San Jose, I am sorry and I apologize for all that hurt. And I really appreciate that you continue to bring us symbols of friendship. It is very apparent that your heart is full of love and that you are doing this to make sure that your culture lives on and that there is pride in your community within your generation, so because we can't forget the past, we can't forget those lessons. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Councilmember Raul Peralas for bringing this resolution forward, and to thank you so much for coming today and sharing your stories. This is so important for us as a city to do. And, you know, you hear that saying that those who don't learn from the past are doomed to repeat it, and we've seen that with the increase in hate crimes against Asian communities during COVID, right? This is not new to us as a country, and it's important for us to speak out today. And as we heard, it's, the pain lives on, and that also came through, came across how loving you are and how passionate you are about preserving your culture, but also the pain that carried on, that drives the conversation today, that drives how important that apology is today. I just, today is about the apology to the Chinese community here in San Jose, but I just wanted to share a couple of minutes of my own family's story. I don't, I don't look Asian, I'm not a Mexican. My grandfather died, and my grandmother, who was Mexican, remarried to a Japanese man, a wonderful Japanese man, they had to travel to Minnesota because it was the only state that it was legal for them to get married in. And they settled in San Jose, just in time for World War II. And Masaji was in the military the whole time, just as so many other families here were. And so I grew up having my history denied. I grew up being told by teachers and the public that internment didn't happen. And so I'll never forget, I will never forget, when Norm Mineta brought that apology forward as a country, and how important that was, and our whole family came together just for that, to acknowledge that moment. And so I just share that because I know how important it is to hear those words and how heartfelt my apology is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I want to again thank Councilmember Peralas, and I want to thank the community members who came forward to speak. And particularly, I want to thank Connie Young Yu, who's been a wonderful partner of the cities and of the communities in so many ways. I think Connie last recall talking to you was during the excavation, the archaeological excavation in Islandville, and just so grateful for all that you did, as we discovered so much and learned so much about our collective past there at the corp yard. And appreciate very much your efforts to keep this very important history alive, and thank you to Jerry Wong and everyone who's come forward. I had the opportunity to speak with an author of the work of historic fiction. The book is called Fire Scar, and Lily Lee is the writer, she lives in the area. And it was, it was about the fire, specifically this one. I understand there were prior fires as well. And what it recounts is, obviously, there's a mix of factual, certainly many of the names are absolutely true or accurate, but then obviously fictional accounts of dialogue. And what's brought out in the book is that several of the property owners around what was then the Second Market Street Chinatown actually bought fire insurance in the weeks before the fire, that this was very much planned, and that there was a volunteer fire brigade that was staffed by volunteer members of the Chinese-American community. And remarkably, they had no water, the water was not accessible to them in a pump station that day. And so there was understood to be a pretty broad conspiracy of horrible actions by many members of the community who understood exactly what was going to happen. And it makes the need for this apology all the greater. I did have the pleasures, as we were Peralas mentioned, of talking to Tom McHenry, because when this first came to the news, I think Sal Pizarro ran the story, I talked to Mayor McHenry, who told me that, you know, that the 100th anniversary, that there was a commemoration at that time, I said, oh, I didn't know that. He said, well, how do you think the plaque got there? I said, that's a good point. So he was there with then Councilmember Susan Hammer. But, you know, it's important that we, every generation, express its own contrition, that we, each generation, understand and appreciate the importance of this history and the value of sharing contrition for the pain that this has caused. Because I think, as was expressed by several of my colleagues, this is, of course, something that does repeat itself, and we've seen it repeat itself here in our own community of San Jose. Perhaps the faces are different, may have been indigenous O'Leary residents in one decade, or Chinese-American residents in the 1880s, or Japanese-American in the 1940s, or Mexican-Americans who lost their land in the 1850s. But this very tragic story repeats itself too often, and so it is important that every generation step forward. So I'm grateful that we are doing this now, and thank everyone for their support.
Councilmember Crossco is virtual, so I need to call a roll call vote. I didn't realize she was signed on. Jimenez?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco? Davis?
Yes.
Espaza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now at time certain item. That is item 7.1. Thank you. Oh, yes. I'll take whatever appreciation I can get. Yes. But thank you. 7.1 is the amendment to Chapter 6.87, the Tobacco Retail License, and Title VI Business License and the Regulations Regarding Flavored Tobacco and E.Cigarettes and Protecting Our Youth.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Roberts, Deputy Director of Code Enforcement, here today to present the Tobacco Retail License Ordinance Amendment, City Council Policy Priority Number 12. And with me is also Division Manager Oscar Correa and PBCE Director Chris Burton. First to provide some background, at this Council Policy Priority Setting Session on February 25th of 2020, two policy proposals from Councilmember Crossco and Councilmember Foley were combined into Priority Proposal Number 12, Flavored Tobacco and E.Cigarettes, Item 1, 2, and 3, and Protecting Our Youth From E.Cigarettes Epidemic, and directing staff to explore policies to limit the sale of tobacco products near schools and other youth-sensitive areas or near existing businesses that sell tobacco products. I also directed staff to remove the Tobacco Retail License exemption for 18 and over tobacco retailers. In that same month, staff was awarded grant funding from the Santa Clara County Public Health Department to carry out the proposed policy work to promote tobacco-free communities in alignment with their Tobacco-Free Healthy Cities program. On December 10th, 2020, staff provided a status report to the Neighborhood Services and Education Committee, which was accepted, and they directed staff to return in the spring with the proposed ordinance. This past June, the Rules and Open Government Committee voted to defer the item to September to allow for more outreach to small businesses and stakeholders. Thank you. As proposed, the amendment would align with state legislation, including SB 7, which increased minimum sale age from 18 to 21. It also would align with SB 793, which bans flavored tobacco products, but exempts pipe tobacco or loose leaf tobacco, hookah, and premium cigars. It should be noted, however, that SB 793 is under referendum and is to suspend its implementation and will be on the ballot for the November 2022 election. There has also been federal legislation, including the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021, which includes the Preventing Online Sales of E.Cigarettes to Children's Act. In April of 2021, the FDA also announced it would work towards the menthol ban, but this is still several years away. In alignment with the City Council Policy Priority Number 12 direction, the goals of staff's policy work was to develop an ordinance to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products and e-cigarettes, explore policies to limit further over-concentration of tobacco businesses, and remove the Tobacco Retail License exemption for 18 and over businesses. We also worked to develop the proximity limits of tobacco retail license businesses to schools and youth-oriented land uses. This was, work was accomplished through extensive outreach and education, or excuse me, engagement, research and benchmarking, spatial analysis of those impacts, and coordination with the city attorney's office and the county public health department. Staff conducted outreach and engagement from October 2020 through August of 2021. We held three webinars for tobacco retailers and industry representatives, the first occurring in March, and then two additional on June 29th and August 21st, following the Rules Committee direction. In total, there was 167 attendees across all three webinars. We also conducted the two online surveys for tobacco retailers, the first occurring in between February and May, and this is actually in 2021, so correction to that slide. And we received 141 responses. The second survey took place between July and August of 2021, and that was presented in three languages, English, Spanish, and Vietnamese, and we received a total of 12 responses. Additionally, we mailed outreach letters on two occasions to all retailers. The first included all retailers as part of our annual renewal totaling 689 letters, and the second being an outreach letter to inform about our upcoming webinar and survey, and that went out to 695 retailers. We had a return rate of 31 and 65 letters respectively. We also regularly updated our Code Enforcement TRL webpage to include our upcoming webinar links, draft ordinance, our online surveys, city council memo, and our frequently asked Sorry, take a breath. Lastly, we could conduct an in-person outreach with each TRL inspection totaling 210 between October 2020 and August 2021. The results of the outreach engagement largely captured feedback and concerns from the retailers and tobacco industry representatives, as well as input from our interest groups and community organizations. And to summarize, the primary concerns and feedback expressed by the tobacco retail licenses businesses and industry representatives included a desire for the city to hold off on these regulations until the results of the referendum occur in November for Senate Bill 793. They also expressed concern about a black market becoming an unregulated market for these banned products. Another aspect or concern that they noted was that banning these flavored products would contribute to a loss of revenue, taxes, and businesses, as stores would be forced to reduce their employees and likely result in a loss of sales. Cities should, they also expressed that the city should provide financial assistance to these small businesses to supplement the loss of the income a flavor ban would cause to help them fulfill their lease requirements as they go through this transition, and especially those affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, specifically the minority in immigrant-owned and family businesses that they believed would be most impacted. Lastly, they argued that prevention, education, and enforcement should be the focus instead of implementing the flavored product ban. Interest groups that staff engaged with also provided a variety of feedback. The primary focus was on health, disproportionate impacts, and more or amended regulations. In terms of health, they felt or expressed that the regulations would bring health benefits, such as protecting our youth and increasing overall community health. They felt that these regulations would prioritize health of their profits and support the harm reduction goals. They also expressed concern over the increased risk factors for COVID-19 that smoking can bring. Concerns about disproportionate impacts and the importance of banning flavored tobacco, including menthol, to reduce the disproportionate use of menthol cigarettes among the African-American community was also expressed. They shared that smoking cessation programs in conjunction with strong tobacco regulations will help decrease public health inequities. And a desire for more or different regulations was also shared, expressing that they felt we should remove the exemption for the flavored hookah, premium cigars, and leaf-leaf tobacco, remove language that allows the TRL licenses to be transferred to new owners, and then also ensuring that enforcement efforts focus on the retailers and not the individuals who may possess those banned products, and that we should be clear in our ordinance that it's not a violation for an individual to possess these products. We also conducted quite a bit of research and benchmarking of our flavored tobacco regulations throughout the state and county, and we found that there were 100 jurisdictions throughout the state who have already enacted these flavored tobacco bans. We found that within the county, there are seven municipalities that prohibited the sale of tobacco within a certain distance of a school, six then enacted regulations to reduce density of tobacco businesses, and eight that enacted flavor bans. We also found best practices central to their regulations to include granting legal nonconforming status for businesses selling tobacco prior to the ordinance, criteria to revoke that status if there was a failure to renew their permit in a timely manner or a change in ownership, and then also grace period to allow businesses to stop selling these newly banned products with a six-month-on-average timeframe. As part of our research and data analysis, we also looked at the impacts of these proximity re... requirements, so the first being 500 feet, which would require retailers to be 500 feet or more, have a distance of 500 feet or more between them, and we found that of the existing retailers, this would impact 526 businesses. So currently, in other words, 526 retailers cannot have another new retailer open next to them as they are already within 500 feet of another retailer. And this is based on our data from March of this year. And then also with the 1,000-foot proximity requirement to youth-sensitive receptors, which for purposes of this ordinance, we've defined as a park, library, public or private preschool, elementary and secondary schools, community and recreation and youth centers. And based on that data, we found that approximately 421 existing retailers would fall within this 1,000-foot proximity requirement. So with this direction, the research and benchmarking we completed, the analysis and our outreach to our stakeholders and their feedback, and we developed the following ordinance amendments to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco and E.Cigarettes and other products, including the menthol-flavored products, establish the proximity limits for new tobacco retailers near schools, new-sensitive receptors, and to one another, increase the minimum sale age from 18 to 21, remove license exemptions, and provide a grace period to deplete the products that are newly prohibited until June of 2022. It would also align the meeting code with the state and federal regulations. And we also explicitly stated in our ordinance that it will not create a violation for individuals who possess banned products. Our plan for implementation and enforcement should this ordinance be adopted, in addition to our normal enforcement efforts, would continue our outreach and education in partnership with our Public Information Officer to update our collateral and materials, including our multilingual TRL brochure and our code enforcement website. We proactively enroll new and previously-exempt businesses to ensure that they are properly registered into the program. We are already on a point to begin enforcement with the county decoy program, having received funding very recently, or at least been advised of our award of funding very recently, so we're in process of developing a contract to receive and utilize that funding. And then we'll provide support to retailers through the grace period to offload products up until June 2022, and begin enforcement as of July 1 in alignment with our annual TRL renewal process, and continue to include our outreach materials and education as part of that process in our annual inspections. So with that, staff recommends that council adopt the ordinance as proposed to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco and E.Cigarettes or other flavored products, prevent further over-concentration of tobacco retail businesses, and reduce youth access to tobacco products in alignment with and completion of City Council Policy Priority Number 12. I would like to thank my team members from Code Enforcement, Division Manager Oscar Corio, Co-Supervisor Jason Gibalisco, Inspector Lauren Dew, City Attorneys Janie Quinn and Vance Chang, and the County Public Health Department for their technical support and expertise. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Rachel. Thanks to you and your team for their work, and also to the county for helping to fund that work. We have many members of the community who would like to speak. Tony?
The first three, I have Ken Jaeger, Kathleen King, and Sunny Ochoa, if you want to come on down. I'll go ahead and call the next few names so you can make your way down too. Tanya P. and Sheila Fan. I have 11 speaker cards for in-person as well, so go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor of City Council, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening on really a very important public health item. Appreciate all the support from council members, and particularly you, Councilmember Foley, for your leadership on this as well. I speak to you today on behalf of the BayMet Community Foundation to urge you to support a comprehensive policy to end the sale of menthol and all flavored tobacco products without exemptions, and to limit the number of tobacco retailers targeting our youth. Anti-smoking, anti-tobacco issues are something that I have been working on for a very long time, was the leader at the county board on really passing some of the toughest anti-smoking regulations, really in the state. I remember a while ago, quite a while ago, meeting with San Jose City staff, trying to have you incorporate a lot of the same policies that we were doing as we were going city to city, and to me, it's accumulating here this evening that with your vote, you can finally, I think, get to the finish line with so many of the policies that we have been fighting for. Fighting big tobacco is not easy, but you will save thousands of youth from becoming addicted to nicotine by taking this action. How often do you have an opportunity to save many of your residents from a lifetime of chronic illness, high blood pressure, heart disease, and cancer? Now is the time to be bold. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Welcome, Catherine.
I have a few names since the other people didn't come down. I have Kathleen King, Sunny Ochoa, Tanya P., Sheila Fan, and Margot Sidner. Please make your way down.
Go ahead. I don't know where the timer is. Thank you. My name is Kathleen King. It's been a while since I've done this, and especially with the mask on, so I'll try and speak up. I so appreciate you bringing this ordinance forward, and I think most of you know my concern is always children, so I'm going to just give you a few statistics. One out of every two children in this county lives in San Jose. About 23% of your residents are children, so almost one out of every four, but they're 100% of your future. And 13% or roughly 19,000 teenagers have used E.Cigarettes in the last month in the county. I think it's very disturbing that, just like candy is not good for us, flavored cigarettes are not good for us. They definitely affect our ability to, in our immune system, and if you think about your immune system, that's what we need to fight COVID, so I'm very concerned about the use of cigarettes. Also, about 600 children are born in San Jose every year to mothers that smoke, and smoking can increase the chances of SIDS, it can increase low birth rates and early births. So I just so applaud the mayor and the council for bringing this forward. I know this isn't easy, and that's why we're lucky enough to vote all of you on this council, so thank you very much.
Hi, sorry about that. My mic was not on when I last called the names. I have Sunny Ochoa, Tanya P., Sheila Fan, Margot Sidner, please come on down, Deanna, Vanessa Marvin, Carol Baker. Please come on down to the microphone.
We're not picking what order you come down, just feel free. If you get to the mic first, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, just say your name, and then I'll move your card over.
Yeah. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sheila Fan, and I have lived in San Jose all my life, and I have lived in District 7 specifically. I want to bring to the attention of a story of a classmate and a dear friend of mine, James. James and I have known each other since the third grade. We went to elementary school, middle school, and high school together. He was known as the popular kid in school, but what he was also known for was his E-cigarette addiction that began when he was a freshman in high school. We lost touch after high school, but in 2018, news broke that he suffered from a collapsed lung due to his E-cigarette use. He was only 22 at the time and needed a lung transplant in order to live. It's been three years, and his new routine is meeting with his respiratory therapist every two weeks, and this has become his life. I strongly urge you to put the lives of individuals like James in, I strongly urge you to think about putting your family members in James's shoes to understand how catastrophic this event impacted his life and his family. Please protect the lives and futures of youth by approving the ordinance to prohibit and of flavored tobacco with no exemptions. Thank you.
Okay, so those of you whose names I called, go ahead and come to the aisle and line up.
Yeah, I think she's suggesting everyone could just stand. It's that way we don't have to wait quite as long.
And then it doesn't matter what order, just say your name so I can mark your card off.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Tanya Pyopoli, and I stand here as a mother and a resident of District 5. I actually applaud all your efforts in banning flavored tobacco products and menthol. The only thing that concerns me right now is the transference clause. While the new ordinance will stop new licenses within 1,000 feet of schools and 500 feet of existing retailers, what happens to the existing licenses? They're still able to transfer their license to sell tobacco to anyone who purchases their business. The business will remain or continue to remain within 500 to 1,000 feet from schools. Making this a loophole in the new ordinance and all the efforts would go in vain. So I want to urge you to close that loophole so that businesses do not resume selling tobacco near schools, ever. And like Councilmember Foley said yesterday, we are advocating for our kids, and I'm here to advocate for the kids in San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Marvin, and I'm the co-chair of the Tobacco-Free Coalition of Santa Clara County. I'm really proud of the work that our coalition has done in cities across Santa Clara County to pass policies just like the one we're talking about here today. But I can't tell you how impatient I've been to see it finally come forward here in San Jose. Partially, that's because I'm also a San Jose resident in District 6 and a mom of two young boys. But I'm also impatient because for far too long, I've heard the stories you're going to be hearing here tonight from individuals who want us to help. Parents, teachers, pediatricians, they can't do this alone. We need you. And that's why the polling shows that 73% of San Jose voters support this proposal before you. So we deeply appreciate the support and leadership of so many of members of this council for championing this policy and for considering it tonight. I'm also deeply appreciative that menthol products are being regulated in your draft proposal. The disproportionate toll of menthol cigarettes among African-Americans is a social injustice that needs to end. However, we want to encourage you to go forward further than the draft policy and close the loopholes for hookah and ban flavored products in all locations. We want to encourage you to put in place strong enforcement provisions for retailers and to restrict the density of tobacco retailers near schools and retailers with no transfer to future owners, just like Tanya was talking about. The sale of flavored tobacco in San Jose is a public health crisis, and we thank you for your consideration tonight.
Next speaker, while you come to the mic, Tim, Annie, and Lindsay, also please come on down.
Good evening. My name is Carol Baker. I am the co-chair, along with Vanessa Marvin, of the Tobacco-Free Coalition of Santa Clara County, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate that you are including menthol in your ordinance consideration, because I'm someone who has been hooked by menthol for 30 years. I finally was able to quit with the help of a lot of work and stress on my part and COPD as a result. Thank you again for considering everything in the ordinance. I wish that the transference was not so liberal and that the hookah is not also considered, but we'll be working on that more for the next year. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Margot Sidner, the CEO of Breathe California, the Bay Area, Golden Gate, and Central Coast, and I'm here to thank you, thank you, thank you for this ordinance. It's been a long time coming, but we're so happy it's finally here. I especially want to thank those who have gotten together to propose strengthening this draft. Thank you so much. But we're really concerned about the tobacco retailer proximity language. Is it the council's intent really to provide open-ended exemptions for current tobacco retailers near schools, meaning that they can sell tobacco indefinitely, and to allow them to transfer this exemption so another buyer can sell tobacco near our schools indefinitely? Breathe California, for the last 37 years, has been located on a block in San Jose where there is a neighborhood tobacco store, actually a neighborhood store that sells tobacco, and it's two blocks from a high school, four blocks from a junior high, and five blocks from an elementary. That tobacco retailer has only changed hands one time in the 37 years that we've been there. If you want to reduce tobacco retailers near schools in our community, in our lifetime, you must remove the transfer exemption paragraph. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Deanna, and I am a district, my members, excuse me, I am a resident of District 3, and I wanted to thank everyone for, you know, supporting the Tobacco Retail License Ordinance and all your efforts, but I am still very concerned about leaving the transference exemption clause in there. And that's because, so just recently, my grandfather was diagnosed with dementia, and he has been a smoker his whole life. Like, he started when he was very young, and it's just been really hard on my family right now, so, and that's a consequence of smoking and starting at a young age. And also, we have, he has also been living in neighborhoods where there's a bunch of tobacco retails, like little tobacco stores in each area, so he's tempted to go in. And so this is why it is very important that we start protecting our, the health of our community and our youth, starting today. And it's just, like, research has shown that when there's an association between, there's an association, sorry, excuse me, there is an association between increased smoking rates and adults and youth when there's an increase of availability of tobacco products. So again, please, I urge you to reconsider the transference clause and help us protect the youth of our families today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Tim Gibbs with the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, and as Margot mentioned, this has been a long time coming, and I wanted to thank the council for their work. It is a big deal to get candy-flavored E.Cigarettes like mango and mint and other kid-friendly flavors off the shelves in San Jose. It's also a big deal to get menthol cigarettes off the shelves in San Jose. The tobacco companies have been targeting vulnerable populations for decades. The misery, death, and disease caused by menthol cigarettes is almost too much to fathom. In fact, we know these policies work because of how much money the tobacco companies have spent trying to kill these policies. The mayor accurately pointed out yesterday during the press conference that the tobacco companies have spent $256 million here in California to fight policies that restrict flavored tobacco since 2017. You know, and that figure doesn't even include what they have spent here in San Jose to try and run out the clock on these policies and make sure that this policy was never going to be heard. Who would have thought we'd see disgraced companies like Juul and RJ Reynolds spending vast sums of money here in San Jose to keep flavored tobacco on the shelves? So we urge and I vote on the policy and support the memo introduced by Councilmember Pam Foley and her colleagues. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Annie Tagan with Tobacco-Free Kids. Thank you. As many of my friends have said, thank you for supporting this lifesaving policy. The tobacco industry has intentionally marketed these candy-flavored products to lure in young, new users for decades, and today here in San Jose, kids can find everything from cotton candy and banana smash to the original candy-flavored tobacco, menthol cigarettes. And so I urge you to support the council memo introduced by Councilmember Foley and several others on council, and I also brought a little bit of show and tell. I don't know if you guys were able to see this ad that's run a number of times in the paper this weekend last, but I just wanted to read the top of it. It says, "Just..." It says, "Just as the school year is kicking into gear, the city council can kick flavored tobacco to the curb." And this is really meant to just applaud you and thank you for the work that you're doing. And I also wanted to note that, it also says that 73% of San Jose voters support a complete end to the sale of all flavored tobacco products. And so I thought that'd be important to you as well. But the most important thing on this ad is the dozens of logos here to show that the community really has your back and we support what you're doing. So thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Freitas with the Campaign for Tobacco Free Kids. Also, as my colleagues mentioned here, to just say thank you for taking this brave step forward and making sure that we are taking this deadly product off the shelves and not hooking our kids into a lifetime of addiction. As my colleague pointed out, 73% of San Jose residents support this policy and want to see this happen. This is an urgent issue. FDA has tried to tackle it, the states tried to tackle it, and every step of the way the industry has gotten in the way, delayed things, referendized things, and caused problems. And it's up to local communities like this one to step up and protect our kids. So please, we support the staff recommendation with the changes recommended in Councilwoman Foley's memo. And we hope that you do as well. Thank you.
Okay, I have one card that I called and I'm not sure if she heard me, Sunny Ochoa. Other than that, I'm going to go ahead and move to Zoom. If Sunny comes down, we'll switch back to in-person. I currently have 34 hands up. Tessa Woodmansey, followed by Michelle Lu.
Tessa Woodmansey. Well, it's very nice to see our city protecting us from harm. It's very important that we have government over businesses. I don't see any need to be supplementing them. I mean, this has been an ongoing issue, you know, what the role of, you know, I mean, we have a capitalist society. We don't need to have corporate welfare. That is a big problem that we're experiencing is corporate welfare and that we should not be under, you know, underwriting with our tax dollars the, the ills that these tobacco has done, just like the ills of our diesel emissions and the ills of our fossil fuel in general, you know, that we're subsidizing. And we need to stop that. So, you know, we're happy that you're going ahead to, to ban the, these tobacco that are, you know, targeting children. And, you know, we have to then, as our, like the science is saying, we have to get away from economic growth and towards public health. That has to be our, our emphasis and our mantra is public health. And it, and it goes towards the other issues that are in our community besides tobacco, which is the diesel emissions, which our politicians, including Ken Jaeger, you know, we haven't fought, fought that. We haven't fought that in our community. We're still having diesel in our neighborhood and we need to do that. And, you know, that, that's where our neighborhood has been injured. And so these issues, and also just like the whole thing with fossil fuels, we have to get rid of them. They are evil. They're, you know, destroying our, our, our society, destroying our culture, destroying our health. And so we have to start prioritizing public health over economic growth. And, you know, we're glad that you're taking this step to do that today, you know? So you work and strengthen that muscle that we have to protect the people. And that is our emphasis, not, you know, businesses. It's got to be over, public health overall. And so that, that needs to be our emphasis in all that we do.
Michelle Lu, followed by Paul Soto.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Lu, CEO of the Health Trust, and I am calling in in support of item 7.1. We urge the council to match other local jurisdictions by restricting the sale of all flavored tobacco products in all locations, no exemptions. As you've already heard, 80% of kids who have ever used tobacco products started with a flavored product. Tobacco use is a major public health issue in San Jose and we thank you for both approving and strengthening the draft ordinance before you this evening.
Paul Soto, followed by Maren Lopez.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. It is, it, this is, this is like, it's a trip to be here with other members of my city and, and to talk about this because at Lincoln High School, at 14 years old, we're smoking Marlboro Reds, man, with the teachers. I mean, this is, this is the 1980s, man. I'm a class of 85. So, I mean, there's just, to go from that to, to, to hearing mothers, because I've all, you know, there's a couple of men, but I heard mainly the mothers talking about, and you can hear it in their voice, that they, they demand that there be some kind of protection for the children in the community. And I, I, I just, I, I like hearing that. I like connecting with that, that, that feminine, like assertion to where there's certain things that they will just not tolerate at all. And, and I'm just hoping that we can carry that kind of theme into other areas of our city. Because that, there's, there's power there, there's power being generated there. And there's a lot of issues that affect the bodies, the minds, and, 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 and their thinking. You know, the way that they perceive the world. And if they don't have those people that are going to step up to protect them, they don't feel worthy. They're, they're not going to feel worthy. They're not going to feel like, like there's somebody there that values them, that values who they are, even though it's not your mother. You know, and so just as a citizen of the city, it's, it's, it's a pleasure to just listen in on this conversation and, and see how far we've come from sharing a cigarette with a teacher at 14 years old to today. Thank you.
Maren Lopez, followed by Heidi Garland.
I would like to thank the city council for taking the time to address this important issue. My name is Maren Lopez and I live in District Six. I am a parent and I am a teacher at a middle school that is located in District Seven. And I am a volunteer for Parents Against Vaping E-cigarettes. I have seen firsthand youth who use flavored tobacco products in my own home, at my kid's high school, and at the middle school where I teach. This is happening everywhere in San Jose. Youth need to be protected from the known harms and addiction that comes from flavored tobacco. No tobacco company or retailer should be allowed to profit off of risking our kids' health. Most kids who use tobacco products start with a flavored product. It is urgent that we remove these products that are easily accessible to San Jose youth. Please pass and implement these protections as soon as possible. Thank you.
Heidi Garland, followed by Philip Gardner.
Hi, I'm Heidi Garland. I own a home and a small business in San Jose. In Chappie's district, actually, my real men wear pink hero. I battled cancer in this home and several of you on the council have honored the American Cancer Society by becoming real men wear pink. And I hope you're going to honor the American Cancer Society again. As a cancer survivor, I ask you to vote yes to end the sale of flavored tobacco products, all flavors, all products, with no exemptions for menthol and hookahs, and limit the number of tobacco retailers targeting our youth when the issue comes before you next week. 81% of kids who've used tobacco started with flavored products. I've sat with people dying from lung cancer. They gasp for air and it's heartbreaking. Let's also increase the minimum age to at least 21, or if I had my way, it would be 51. Put the health of our kids and our residents over tobacco company profits. It's time to stand up to big tobacco and protect the residents of San Jose like me, my husband, and our two sons. Thank you.
Philip Gardner, followed by caller 5140.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Philip Gardner. I have spoken to you a number of times before. I'm one of the co-chairs of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. And I strongly encourage you to support the ordinance to remove menthol cigarettes, all flavored tobacco products, including flavored hookah, not all hookah, but flavored hookah from the marketplace in San Jose. Particularly at the time of the COVID-19 pandemic and the Black Lives Matters movement, the council could do nothing more better than to, to do this today. It's become clear that menthol cigarettes and flavored little cigars are the main vector of death and disease into the black community. Unfortunately, I had the opportunity to recently send you all the recent article that showed that menthol cigarettes used by African-Americans is disproportionately killing them. This is thoroughly problematic. Let's be clear that this has been going on for some 30 years and you have a chance to stop it here. I really want to commend the council and the report that has been given, but also ask you to go further. You do not have to do what other places are doing and, and exclude hookah. I think you need to actually include flavored hookah. This doesn't mean all hookah products, it just means flavored hookah. Having said that, let me just thank the council again for making sure menthol doesn't stay on your shelves. You will be saving black lives. Thank you very much.
Update on numbers, there are 41 hands up, caller 5140, followed by Dippy Venkates.
All of I hear down there is a bunch of do-gooders. Yeah, you're going to save the planet by doing this. Meanwhile, this city council, hey, Ralph Ral, if you're listening, likes to rub their hands together. They talk about marijuana tax. That's regulated and, and fees and taxes are all going to San Jose PD, I mean, pot dealers. They're pot dealers in your police department. Now, they don't enforce laws, they just collect tobacco revenue, or I should say tobacco, marijuana revenue for you people. You should be ashamed of yourself. Every tax you've taken from cigarettes and menthols and vapes and everything else, you should give it back if it's that bad. If it's that bad, you're participating right now. Someone's buying a pack of smokes, you're participating in it because your city takes that tax. You should take that money and give it away or give it back to the consumer that you stole it from, if you're so good. You, you people make me sick that you guys do this with the, with the, with the marijuana taxes and the fees, all through the, the power of the most armed citizenry, which is the police department, stealing money from these, from these pot dealers. What they're, they're just stealing money from pot. They used to do it illegally, now they're doing it legally. I want anybody on that council to tell me where that money goes and then I want to make sure it doesn't go through the banking system because that's a federal violation. If you guys use the banking system, that's a federal violation. Where do you count this money? In a dark basement somewhere with a 60-watt bulb with a bunch of cops around? Who, who counts this money? You people make me sick. And you should, you should, you should not be on the city council if you don't want to take in tax revenue that, that's coming from tobacco. You're too good for that and you shouldn't be on the city council. You're a bunch of snotty, snooty people who, who don't deserve anything. Every one of you should resign.
I hate to interrupt after a bright note like that, but I wanted to announce at 6 o'clock, we're going to shorten the period of public comment from two minutes to one minute because we have a full agenda. We need to call this the question. So I appreciate everyone's public comment. We'll continue to hear public comment at 6 o'clock. We'll be shortening it to one minute. Thank you, Tony.
Vaping has is disastrous and kids are fooled into thinking that it is cool and safe and it's virtually impossible to stop kids from hiding devices and using them. In my community, near the Boba Tea and Foshee yogurt shops, there are e-cigarette and tobacco retailers. And because these retailers are near popular places that kids go to, they're easily able to get access and be influenced by tobacco and vapes. There is a retailer that has been there in my community ever since I was born, near a restaurant that I went to all the time and the gas station that my dad always filled up gas at. Even I thought about going to the store because of the cool-looking advertising on the front and the big signs about strawberry-flavored vapes. Retailers these days stock varieties of flavors such as mango and menthol, which is what many kids start with these days since it goes down a little easier. Flavored tobacco acts as a gateway drug because it's advertised with fun colors and fruity flavors, which makes youth accept it much more easily and even feel like it's healthier. Because of the easy access to vapes and tobacco through retailers, many more kids are getting hooked and we must address this problem to protect my generation and the future ones to come. Thank you.
Bonnie Halpern Felsher, followed by Don B.
Hello, good evening. I'm Dr. Bonnie Halpern Felsher. I'm a tenured professor of pediatrics at Stanford University and a developmental psychologist and founder and executive director of the Tobacco Prevention Toolkit. I have over 25 years of experience researching why youth use tobacco. On behalf of Stanford University and my REACH lab, I know that you are hearing from many advocates, parents, and youth today, but we wanted to give you the perspective from our research as well. I'm very happy and thankful that San Jose is considering this ordinance and I encourage you to do so and to fully close all loopholes, including as noted in Councilwoman Foley's memo. We need no exemptions. This is important because as a scientist and developmental psychologist with over 170 publications in scientific journals, I can honestly say that banning all flavors in all tobacco products is based on sound evidence and will protect and save lives and save our kids from a lifetime of addiction. We have four reasons. First, tobacco use, vaping, and smoking are related to COVID-19. Second, there are over 15,000 e-cigarette flavors and numerous flavors in other tobacco products, including cigars and hookah. Flavors including mint and menthol attract young people. Most youth cite that flavors are the reason why they use these products and they would quit if they didn't have flavors. Flavors mask the, the inherent risks that are in tobacco. And finally, youth are getting these products from local shops despite COVID. Now's the time to act. As we fight coronavirus, it has never been more important to keep our lungs healthy. There is clear evidence about that relationship between smoking and tobacco use and coronavirus and we must do everything to prevent tobacco use among our youth. Thank you very much.
Don B, followed by Sarita Coley.
Hi, yes, thank you, Mr. City Council. Forget my poor Zoom skills. I help manage an essential business. I rarely get to use Zoom. Every day I work as a mascot police. You know, every day I interact with angry people. I get yelled at, I get flipped off, or I get mocked. You know, I'm the face of government overreach and I kind of feel like the vape ban, flavor ban is overreach as well. You know, I vape to self-medicate. I appreciate having flavors. You know, taste buds are like fingerprints. Everyone's got a, you know, or everyone's are different. I'm really concerned about is like, what about our current enforcement of the policies? You know, I was trying to research online and I really couldn't find any reliable records about the amount of fines and fees that the city issues or collects regarding underage tobacco sales. The FDA's got a site, but it's really limited its scope. You know, one interesting thing I found that, you know, in 2020, the Moms Against Drunk Driving, they, they did some records where regarding alcohol-related deaths that were up, you know, six or nine percent, despite a 13% drop in vehicle miles traveled. And this is the same period of time that we see a rise in like popular beverages, like hard seltzers, which are very popular among teens. You know, all these alcohols, they contain fruit and candy flavors. These apparently are fine, but, you know, of, you know, these are all a gateway to alcoholism, which will also lead to a long line of health problems down the road. But, you know, you know, those are fine, yet we, you know, vape products, now these cross a line. You know, I'm asking the, the council to help respect and protect my ability to self-medicate responsibly. And if bans work, how come my neighborhood sounds like a war zone every Fourth of July with a fireworks ban? The ban won't work. Thank you.
Sarita Coley, followed by Amaya Wooding.
Good evening, City Council members, Mayor Licardo. My name is Sarita Coley and I'm the CEO of Aki, Asian Americans for Community Involvement. Thank you for bringing this forward and I urge you to support and even strengthen the proposed amendments to the San Jose Municipal Code outlined in Agenda Item 7.1, restricting the sale of tobacco products. We would really like to see San Jose's policy match other jurisdictions by restricting the sale of all flavored tobacco products in all locations, including flavored hookah, premium cigars, and loose leaf tobacco. Any exemption in this policy will likely make products not covered by these restrictions a go-to for youth in San Jose. As a major provider of healthcare and substance use treatment services in San Jose, Aki has seen firsthand the harmful effects of tobacco use on our local Aki has seen firsthand the harmful effects of tobacco use on our local communities. Even more concerning, we have also seen how the tobacco industry has been heavily targeting youth in its marketing through its flavored tobacco products. As you've heard other speakers say, one in eight Santa Clara County teens report having used tobacco products in the past. And a recent study found about eighty percent of youth who have ever used tobacco products begin with a flavored product. Aki applauds San Jose's proud history of enacting policy to reduce the sale and use of cigarettes in our communities. In maintaining that legacy, we now must act just as aggressively to combat the sale and use of flavored tobacco. And we urge the city council to strengthen and enact these common sense proposals and build a healthier, more resilient San Jose. Thank you.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Amaya Wooding. Uh it's been over two years now since I first commented on this issue back in committee, so I'm very happy that we're able to have this discussion now despite what our communities have been enduring in the meantime. Um I just wanted to express some confusion at the special status that the draft ordinance gives to flavored hookah. Um there's no justification for this given in the findings. Instead, there's actually quite the opposite, right? There's a statement that council wants, quote, "A prohibition on the sale of flavored tobacco products in order to protect the public welfare." Is flavored hookah not a flavored tobacco product? The only possible justification I can find for this is in the June first memorandum, which repeats talking points from tobacco industry lobbyists who have a profit motive in keeping these products in the city. According to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty California Student Tobacco Survey, hookah is as popular among youth as smokeless tobacco and cigars. Eighty-two point five percent of high school hookah users in California reported using a flavored hookah product, which is actually the highest portion of flavor users after e-cigarettes. Nearly half of those hookah users reported that they regularly used fruit flavors. Um mint or menthol, candy or sweet, and alcohol or liquor are all roughly tied in popularity for second. And these are the same flavors that cause alarm when they're in e-cigarettes, cigarettes and cigarrillos or any other tobacco product, so they deserve the same attention from you. Thank you. Good night.
Can you hear?
Hello? Hello?
This is call in user two, we'll move back to Sashit after you, go ahead. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello? We can hear you, go ahead.
Oh, okay, hi. I would just like to say that I believe that if you guys ban uh menthol cigarettes, it will cause unattended consequences. And since menthol and non-menthol cigarettes both are dangerous, it's nonsensical to continue to allow cigarettes mostly used by white but to criminalize the one primary use by black Americans. That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
Wonderful. Uh Mayor Licardo, it's a pleasure seeing you and your council once again. I served on your board for the Innovation Council of Silicon Valley a couple of years ago. It's a pleasure to be back. I'm actually representing the American Cancer Society. And I'm delighted with the fact that you have this resolution before you right now. Uh the fact of the matter is, and I'm very delighted, that the intent of this legislation, of this regulation is indeed very sound and I'm delighted that we had a researcher right now make the connection between the fact that COVID affects your lungs and everything that we've got going here with tobacco, e-cigarettes and stuff also affects your lungs. We don't have to wait for any more research to suggest to us that the intention of this regulation is very sound. So kudos on that. I was also very happy to see that our city managers have very effectively developed an enforcement program. But there were questions as to how well has this enforcement worked previously. Please, please pay attention to uh beefing up the enforcement aspects and doing this as efficiently as possible. Thirdly, the matter that makes regulations stronger and sounder and most importantly, sustainable, is how they continue to become stronger over time and they begin right. The aspects of menthol.
Sashit, we lost you, but I have you back if you unmute.
I was concluding to say that the sustenance of these things is very important. And from a sustenance point of view, menthol elements have been talked about, hookers have been talked about, transference has been talked about. Please do everything within your powers out here to take that into consideration once again. Thank you very much.
Hello, honorable mayor and esteemed council members. My name is Abba Arma. I am the Director, Health and Wellness at the Social Equity Initiative, a biotech professional and a lifelong San Jose resident who grew up in District Ten, currently a resident and homeowner in District Three. As a black woman, I have witnessed the adverse effects of tobacco use and exposure to tobacco products on many people, young people in particular. We need the tobacco retail license to fully protect the youth in our community. Policy that will ensure that youth going about their day-to-day activities are not enticed by harmful and very addictive tobacco and nicotine products is vital. The long-established research data all point to one thing. Exposure to tobacco products presents a health disadvantage for you. We don't want these disadvantages to be perpetuated for young people in our community. Survey responses from San Jose residents also support a ban on flavored tobacco products near youth-sensitive areas. I have personally witnessed the effects of early exposure to tobacco products on youth right here in San Jose. A younger cousin of mine who was exposed to tobacco and nicotine products in high school has since become addicted to these products. This cousin has developed a chronic cough and diminished lung capacity, as evidenced by shortness of breath. If retailers are permitted to pass along their retail licenses, we would be doing young people a disservice. This would be a health injustice. We must do all we can to protect the health and safety of our community, especially the youth, including their exposure to tobacco products and ultimately from the adverse health effects resulting in the use of these products. We need to strengthen ordinance to reduce this exposure.
Evening, mayor and San Jose City Council. My name is Lizzie Velton. I'm a mother of two boys and I work for the American Heart Association in the Bay Area. And I urge your support for the proposed measure and the memo from Councilmember Foley. Ending the sale of menthol cigarettes and many other flavored tobacco products while strengthening enforcement of the ordinance will help save lives and ensure that your intentions are adequately implemented. However, it is also vitally important that you remove the proposed exemptions for hookah, premium cigars and loose leaf pipe tobacco. We've seen many Bay Area jurisdictions, including Santa Clara County itself, pass comprehensive policies with no exemptions. Why choose to do less? After more than a year of consideration, tonight's your opportunity to do the right thing. Polling shows you have the support from over seventy percent of San Jose voters. And during a devastating pandemic, I ask you to stand tonight for the health of our community and end the sale of all deadly and addictive flavored tobacco products with no exemptions. And please don't kick the can down the line to twenty twenty-three, a year after implementation, just to see how it all shakes out. You're playing with people's lives here. Let's do it tonight. Thank you for your time and for your vote.
Hello, I am Matthew Tinsley, Director of the Strong Start Coalition for the Santa Clara County Office of Education. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of County Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mary Ann Duan. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Licardo, Vice Mayor Jones and members of the San Jose City Council. Santa Clara County Office of Education supports the Tobacco Retail License Ordinance Amendment, which restricts the sale of flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes and other products, including menthol-flavored products, and establishes proximity limits for new tobacco retailers near schools. We also advocate for the ban of all flavored tobacco products, including hookah, in all San Jose locations and the elimination of the adult-only store exemption. We know that youth often begin their exploration of harmful substances with flavored products. Thus, in alliance with the County of Santa Clara Public Health Department, we strongly urge you to move forward with a comprehensive tobacco retail license without exemptions and offer full support to assist the city of San Jose in moving forward with these efforts. Thank you.
Walter Wilson, followed by Ernie Lopez, and it is also now six o'clock, so we're going to a one-minute timer. Walter Wilson?
Yeah, yes, good evening, uh mayor, council and staff. Uh my name is Walter Wilson and um today I'm representing myself and my family. You know, this this uh this issue around um this issue around um menthol and menthol smoking in the black community is tragic. The reality is that over, so when ninety percent of all blacks who smoke in this country smoke menthol and thirty-nine thousand of those people die every year from cancer-related, smoking-related uh matters. You know, one of the quick things I want to say is this, um I don't want to see this thing kicked down the road and I don't want to see smoking move fifty or a hundred feet away from schools. I want to see a ban completely in the city of San Jose. Follow the lead from the county of Santa Clara. Don't do less, do more, stand up for people and definitely stand up for those of us who can't stand up for ourselves. Thank you so much and thank you for your work.
Good evening, my name is Ernie Lopez. My four kids, wife and I live in District Six. I volunteer for Pave, Parents Against Vaping E-Cigarettes. Tobacco companies target our kids with flavored tobacco products. Four years ago, my wife and I would smell a berry flavor in the bedroom of one of our kids. That's how we knew he had been smoking. Recently, four years later, the same son acknowledged that he's now addicted to e-cigarettes. And he frequently coughs from smoking e-cigarettes. I'm grateful that the San Jose City Council is taking this important first step to protect our kids. Please pass and implement this protection without delay. Thank you.
Good evening, San Jose City Council. My name's McKenna Jenkins and I'm a representative of the National Hookah Community Association. I want to sincerely thank you, city council, city council staff, the city attorney and code enforcement for recognizing the cultural significance of hookah and exempting it from the flavored tobacco ban. There are forty hookah lounges and retailers that exist in San Jose and they all appreciate the recognition that their businesses cater to the city's Middle Eastern and Indian communities who have a place to gather and safely practice their culture. The legislature convened deeply on SB seven ninety-three, debated it in both houses and voted in bipartisan to ban the issue that is at the cause of the youth-flavored tobacco crisis, vapes and e-cigarettes. We appreciate the city maintaining local law to be the same as state law and this helps to keep full transparency for lounges and retailers. Thank you to code enforcement for hosting informational webinars on the ordinance and providing a forum for businesses to provide their feedback. On behalf of the forty hookah lounges and retailers who uh work very hard every day to advocate for the preservation of their culture, we want to thank you for hearing SB seven ninety-
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Maxwell Love, resident of District Nine and a junior student at Oakwood High School. I would like to express my gratitude for the efforts of City Councilmember Foley for leading this cause as well as the council for considering. This summer, I worked in the Chemical Engineering Department of UCLA on a novel approach to using antioxidants to mitigate the cytotoxic effects of cigarette smoke. Through my direct observations, I have had the privilege to explore what exactly makes smoke the leading cause of preventable death in the United States. As a high schooler, I've seen countless fellow students become addicted to flavored tobacco products. It is not a coincidence that eighty percent of minors using tobacco products started with a flavored product, which can also act as a gateway drug to harder and more dangerous substances. For these reasons, I strongly urge the council to adopt the ordinance to end the sale of all flavored tobacco, including menthol cigarettes and close the loopholes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, my name is Erwin Morton. I want to thank the mayor and the council profusely for the time and attention you have devoted to this. I'm here today on behalf of Santa Clara Valley PTA, which is based in San Jose and advocates on behalf of young people countywide. The PTA has been advocating on children's health since eighteen ninety-seven, that's nearly a hundred and twenty-five years. The PTA council I belong to worked for nearly a year to develop a resolution on protecting our students from vaping. When we brought it to our annual state convention in twenty twenty, ninety-nine percent of delegates voted yes. That's ninety-nine percent of a statewide group diverse in every way except one. We all subscribe to PTA's motto, every child, one voice. I'm just one dad in front of a mic, but there are tens of thousands of others standing right behind me saying, please protect our children, please adopt this measure without exemptions. Thank you.
Hi, how's it going? I would like to start off by saying I'm not proud to be a business owner or a resident here in San Jose. What you are doing is not helping the kids' pandemic with vaping, but gonna make it worse. You're creating a black market. And if you've seen the stats from San Francisco's ban on flavors, eighteen to twenty-four-year-old of age tobacco cigarette use has climbed to thirty-five percent. You're gonna have, you have a healthier alternative from vaping to then have uh kids or and older adults turn back to cigarettes, which kills half a million people a year. Think about that. You're never gonna stop this kids' pandemic if you don't penalize these kids. You're basically letting them get away with murder. Us business owners are not the bad guys, for we do ID every person purchasing. We don't want to sell to kids, we only cater to adults. Let the state decide, the government um decide on these policies.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, great. Um hi, my name is Lucy. I'm a current Fremont resident, potential future San Jose resident. I'm speaking on Agenda Item seven point one and I urge the council to adopt a comprehensive tobacco retail ordinance that will end the sale of all flavored tobacco products, making no exceptions for menthol, hookah and loose leaf tobacco products. And as a student of public health, I am a fan of uh hard numbers, so here are some. According to the California Student Tobacco Survey, this past year, ninety-two percent of current tobacco users used flavored tobacco products. Among current smokers still in K through twelve, fifty percent use menthol cigarettes. And for the people who are suggesting that this might create a black market, about fifty percent of students are saying that they don't pay for their vapes already. So they're accessing it somehow and I think this is a great way to limit them and I strongly urge the passing of this ordinance. You can decrease the access to tobacco products and it would save a huge number of lives, especially in San Jose. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Brian Davis. I direct a project called LGBTQ minus tobacco. Six years ago, you stopped tobacco industry representatives from distributing one-pack-for-one-buck coupons and LGBTQ and other bars popular with young adults, ending one of Big Tobacco's young youth-targeting strategies. Now you are looking to restrict flavors and are considering exempting hookah lounges. Over eighty percent of high school-age hookah smokers in California use flavored hookah and LGBTQ high schoolers in California are about four times more likely to smoke hookah than their straight peers. So this exemption would not protect youth and will especially not protect queer youth. It is well documented that traditional hookah is harsh and unflavored, so stopping the sale of flavored hookah tobacco will not stop traditional use by members of that culture, but it will save the lives of youth who are attracted to flavors. but it will save the lives of youth who are attracted to flavors. Cupertino, Los Gatos, Palo Alto, Los Altos, and unincorporated Santa Clara County have all included hookah in their flavor restriction policies. Thank you.
Carol McGruder, followed by Aditya Indla.
Hi, this is Carol McGruder. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Carol McGruder, and I'm the other co-chair of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. You already heard from Dr. Phil Gardner. I just want to strongly encourage you to pass this ordinance with no exemptions for menthol and hookah. We are national leaders in getting menthol, methylated tobacco products, Newport cigarettes, out of the African-American community, but we also have had to put hookah on our list because hookah is spreading like a cancer across this country. It's proliferating in African-American communities. I'm currently in Atlanta with my daughter, and hookah is all the rage here with our historically black college and university students. So hookah does not deserve a cultural exemption. It is big business. It is smoke. It is secondhand smoke. It is particulates, and it needs to be not given a pass. So we encourage you to have the strongest legislation to protect the citizens of you-
Aditya Indla, followed by Jimmy Ansira.
Hi, my name is Aditya Indla, and I'm a high school student in San Jose. And so I've seen firsthand just how bad tobacco use can be among my peers. I've had the experience of walking into bathrooms and into a vape cloud, and I've seen and heard my friends talking about flavored tobacco. I've even heard about them talking about these hookahs. And so I don't think exempting hookahs is going to be enough because it leaves flavored tobacco products available for youth to use, and it leaves my friends and other classmates to be easy prey for big tobacco and for them to get hooked. And so I would like to ask the city council to consider removing the exemption for hookah in order to help protect our community in the future and in order to help protect next generation. Thank you.
Jimmy Ansira, followed by Reema Kori.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Jimmy Ansira, and I'm a former resident of San Jose with strong ties to the city as ninety percent of my family currently lives there. Growing up in San Jose, there was never a shortage of hookah lounges to visit. And my group of friends, as soon as you turned eighteen, they were one of the first places you went to celebrate. It was almost a rite of passage, something that made you an adult in their eyes. One night shortly after I had my rite of passage into the hookah lounges, I was walking to my car with a regular hookah buddy. As we crossed the street, he lights up a cigarette and then offers me one. I never considered myself a smoker. I just went to hookah lounges to, as a social aspect. Smoking a cigarette had never crossed my mind, but for some reason in that moment, I thought, why not? I began smoking shortly after that incident for about a year, and I think I still would have been a smoker to this day if it wasn't for my mother. Her threatening to kick me out stopped my addiction altogether. I've witnessed firsthand how flavored hookahs gave way to other tobacco products, and I hope you consider this information moving forward. Thank you.
Reema Kori, followed by Zachary Grass Lazarus.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Reema Kori. I'm one of the founding members of the National Hookah Community Association, which was established to protect and preserve the rich cultural tradition of hookah. On behalf of the NHCA members that include Arabs, Armenians, Turks, Indians, North Africans, and other minority groups, we thank you for your consideration of the several hundred-year cultural tradition of hookah. One of NHCA's main purposes is to educate lawmakers and the public about the culture of hookah, which is largely misunderstood. Hookah is not vape. Hookah is not a problem in the classrooms, which was stated by Governor Gavin Newsom. Youth usage of hookah has decreased from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, according to the California Tobacco Survey, and currently, youth who have ever used hookah is point six percent. According to the two thousand twenty CDC survey, hookah used by youth on a national scale is two point seven versus nineteen point six who vape. Hookahs are not easily concealed because they are traditionally three feet tall. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Zachary Grass Lazarus, followed by Maria Vargas.
Hi, my name is Rachel Gratz Lazarus, and I'm a member of the Alameda County Tobacco Control Coalition and a regional partner to the Tobacco Free Coalition of Santa Clara County. Thank you for supporting this lifesaving policy. I'm grateful that San Jose's ordinance ends the sale of menthol cigarettes and many other flavored tobacco products. However, flavored tobacco is used to hook kids, and any exemption like hookah will become a go-to product for youth in San Jose. In Alameda County, we're proud that most of our jurisdictions have taken bold leadership to prioritize health and enact comprehensive TRLs that completely end the sale of all flavored tobacco, no exemptions. This includes Oakland, Hayward, Fremont, Alameda County, Albany, Berkeley, Alameda, Dublin, Livermore, and Pleasanton. Residents of these communities are protected from a lifetime of tobacco addiction caused by flavored tobacco. San Jose youth deserve those same protections. While SB seven ninety-three is a step forward statewide, it's not the best we can do at the local level. I urge the council to adopt the ordinance and close its loopholes. It's time to end the sale of all flavored tobacco in San Jose with no exemptions and put public health over industry profit. Thank you for your leadership.
Maria Vargas, followed by Nihal Sahul.
Good evening, your honorable mayor and honorable council members. My name is Maria Vargas, and I am an emerging community leader with Breathe California. Through the research I did with Breathe California, we observed that eighty percent of the stores in District Three were less than a mile away from a school. In District Five, we saw sixty-three percent of the retailers were within one to two miles from a school. Because of these results, we cannot be okay with the ordinance as is. This is, this will limit the community's right to prosper and lead a healthier life. The transference clause must go, as it will allow retailers, current and future, to sell in close proximity to our youth. As an aunt and community leader, I urge you to pass a comprehensive tobacco retail license with no exemptions to protect the youth and the community of San Jose. Thank you for your time, your honorable mayor and honorable council members.
Nihal Sahul, followed by Taylor Lynn.
All right, hello, everyone. I am Nihal Sahul from the PAC. I will get as much or as far as I can with the letter that we wrote earlier. We are the Peer Advocate Advisory Council, a youth branch of the Tobacco Use Prevention Education Program at Santa Clara County Office of Education. We are made up of about twenty student leaders who are passionate about leading tobacco and vaping prevention efforts to protect their peers in the Santa Clara County. We are submitting this letter of support in order to help promote the flavor ban. As young people, we have seen the harmful implications of tobacco nicotine use at ground level in our schools and our neighborhoods and in by our friends. The variety of flavors available in San Jose stores that are found in vapes is a major contributing factor to the severity of the issues, contributing to youth substance abuse and addiction. In effect, according to the Santa Clara County Public Health Department, approximately eighty-two point three percent of youth reported using flavored vapes. They go to report in that one in four Santa Clara County teens have used a vape, and three in five CSCC.
Taylor Lynn, followed by Lori Bremner.
Hello, my name is Taylor Lynn. I'm in twelfth grade, and I'm a part of the Peer Advocate Advisory Council of Santa Clara County of Office of Education. Today, I'll be giving a comment as a private citizen from Evergreen Valley High School in District Eight. Over the years, I've witnessed how, as students mature faster, the younger they succumb to peer pressure, the most prominent and dangerous being the use of vape products. At my school, students as young as fourteen are not only using them, but also selling them. The most appealing reason why youth purchase vape products is because of the wide variety of flavors being advertised to us. Students can be seen carrying everything from minty to fruity flavors in their pockets. Their bright colors and familiar tastes seem attractive and harmless, but they're actually quickly developing addictions to nicotine. Eventually, this will lead to long-term damage to the lungs, brain, and heart. Therefore, I am urging the amendment to Chapter six point eight seven to protect youth like me from posing irreversible damage to ourselves. Thank you for listening, and please keep everyone safe and healthy by supporting the flavor ban.
Lori Bremner, followed by Jen Grand Lahono.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lori Bremner with Parents Against Vaping E-Cigarettes, PAVE. PAVE supports comprehensive ordinances that end the sale of all flavored tobacco products with no exemptions for any flavor nor any product type. Minty menthol is absolutely a kid favorite, and almost forty percent of teenagers who vape use minty menthol. We are so grateful that menthol is included in your proposed ordinance. And despite what the hookah lobbyists say, hookah flavors like Gummy Bear and Tropical Punch most definitely target youth. Look at the Instagram pages for the lounges and judge for yourself if it looks like a cultural tradition to you. The ordinance before you tonight is a very good first step towards protecting the youth in San Jose, and we thank you. But the need for these protections are urgent, so we beg you to shorten the implementation period to three months, and please include hookah flavored hookah tonight. San Jose kids deserve nothing less. They are counting on you.
Jen Grand, followed by Amber Henny.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jen Grand Lahono of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. Thank you for considering a policy to protect the health of our youth and communities of color. The draft ordinance and council member Foley's amendment is a great first step, but Santa Clara County, Oakland, and San Francisco have stronger protections with no exemptions. San Jose residents deserve those same protections. That's why we urge you to remove the proposed exemptions for flavored hookah, premium cigars, and loosely tobacco, and ensure no exemption is added for menthol. The tobacco industry knows flavors hook kids, and any exempted product will become the go-to flavored tobacco product for youth. Current language opens, currently which opens this policy up to possible legal challenges, so I've sent model definitions we recommend that are more legally defensible. We support the density and location provisions proposed and ask the remove license transferability so that over time tobacco marketing near youth areas is reduced. Together with strengthened enforcement protocols, these provisions go far to protect the lives of our young people and communities of color from the predatory marketing of tobacco.
Amber Henny, followed by Sweetha.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amber Henny. I'm currently a senior at Evergreen Valley High School, and I'm also a member of the Santa Clara Peer Advocate Advisory Council. I'm speaking today as a citizen of the Evergreen area in San Jose. I'm in support of eliminating the sale of flavored tobacco products in retail stores in San Jose and limiting both tobacco and alcohol sales near schools. Since the start of my freshman year until now, I've seen an extreme increase in vaping and usage of nicotine products just in my own school and community. Most people around me who vape thoroughly enjoy the flavors. The artificial flavors added to these products attract teenagers to try them for the first time and then become addicted for life as a consequence. Nicotine is well-known for causing severe disease, decreases in quality of life, and is extremely addictive. Because vaping has become such a prevalent issue among teenagers in our community, it is vital that we enact change. Banning flavored e-cigarettes, vapes, and other electronic nicotine delivery systems from stores will cause a potential dramatic drop in youth vaping and protect the future of our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Sweetha, followed by Dreann. Go ahead.
My name is, yeah, hi. My name is Sweetha, and I'm a resident of District Ten and also a current student at San Jose State University. And through the passion I have for youth of San Jose, I urge you to reconsider the tobacco retail license ordinance being passed as is. Research has shown that ninety-two point six percent of tobacco retailers are within a thousand feet of schools. This drives the usage of tobacco products amongst youth, and it does not so well with me as I have young siblings and family members who fall for the prey of this. Please remove the transference clause so tobacco retailers, new and old, do not continue selling near our youth. This is not an individual issue. It is a community issue. Again, I urge you to pass the tobacco retail license ordinance with no exemptions so we can create a healthier community in San Jose. Thank you.
Dreann, followed by Michelle Heinz.
Good evening, your honorable mayor and council members. My name is Dreann, and I am a recent graduate from San Jose State University. I come from a family of tobacco users. In fact, I am asthmatic, and my grandmother battled lung cancer three times. She passed on the fourth battle. It is important to me that we protect our youth from these outcomes. Research has shown that an increased evidence of tobacco retailers can lead to increased tobacco usage in adult and youth. In February, I observed thirty-three tobacco retail shops and discovered that eighty percent of them are less than one mile away from schools in District Three. I am concerned that this economy prioritizes the revenue from tobacco retailers more than the well-being of its youth. The current ordinance, as is, comes with a transfer clause that will allow retailers near schools and youth-attracting areas to transfer their exemptions from the ordinance ban on proximity requirements. Please hear me out and strengthen the TRL. Thank you.
Michelle Heinz, followed by Erica Costa.
Good evening, your honorable mayor and council members. My name is Michelle Heinz, and I am a recent graduate of San Jose State University. As someone who has seen the detrimental effects tobacco can have within my own grandparents who suffered from COPD and lung cancer, I do not want the youth that is our future to suffer the same grim health outcomes. Last February, I conducted a public opinion survey with two hundred and four adult and two hundred and thirty-five youth responses in San Jose. When asked how important it is to pass tobacco-free laws, eighty percent of the youth and eighty-three percent of adults stated it was very or somewhat important to them to pass these laws. Given the feelings of the community, it is imperative that a strong TRL with no exemptions is passed, specifically the transference clause that will allow businesses to transfer their exemptions from selling close to the youth for decades to come. Thank you for your time.
Erica Costa, followed by Paula Baker.
Hello, good evening, council members. My name is Erica Costa, and I am the advocacy director for the American Lung Association in California. Thank you for the chance to speak this evening and for your leadership in addressing this very important issue. On behalf of the American Lung Association, the leading public health organization fighting to reduce and prevent lung disease, we are in support of policies that restrict the sale of all flavored tobacco products, all products, all locations, all flavors. Each year in California, nearly forty thousand adults die from smoking-related causes, and tobacco companies have a long history of using flavored tobacco products to entice new, younger customers. As you've heard tonight, three out of four youth smokers report that they initiate with a flavored product, and in Santa Clara County in particular, one in eight uses tobacco products. E-cigarette use among middle and high school students is higher than that of traditional tobacco products, but effective policies to end the sale of flavored tobacco products can curb that trend. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Paula Baker, followed by Ruth Wan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This is Paula Baker. I work in the area of tobacco cessation. I also am speaking on behalf of my family. I have over five nieces and nephews who have grown up and are growing up in San Jose. I'm the youngest of six children, adult children. All of our, my father's generation were wiped out by cigarette smoking and tobacco-related diseases. I want to urge you not to have the exemption for hookah. Hookah is not, the way it's being used currently is not in the cultural tradition of the countries that have been cited. And that's a statement by public health professionals from those countries. Currently, with forty different locations in San Jose, many of them-
Ruth Wan, followed by James Staton. I also have nine hands-ups. This is our final nine.
Hello, good evening, council members. I am a San Jose resident and a tobacco flavor user, and I am in my forties. Last time I checked, grown-ups manufacture tobacco flavor in their basements for grown-ups. If laws are in place, then why are we penalizing law-abiding citizens, businesses? If kids get their hands on tobacco and it's not from local shops, then they are not getting it from law-abiding businesses, and that shows you the black market has already taken over. If you ban this, then there will be a safety issue, and that will put our kids in harm's way. Please support more education rather than bans, as this will harm our young kids. Look at San Francisco as a prime example on the rise of tobacco use in our youth, and tobacco flavor is banned there. I also do not support banning the license transfer unless the city is willing to buy them out, what the market is willing to pay for their businesses, as this could be a retirement for those business people who've been there for as long as ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years. They do not deserve to be taken away from them. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is James Staton. I'm the head chair of the San Jose City of the Valley in ACP. For sixty years, the tobacco industry has targeted the black community with the menthol products and flavored products. We have supported the ban of these things since, nationally since two thousand and sixteen. You know, tobacco use is the number-one killer among African-Americans in this country. This was the number-one preventable killer. And as people pointed out, because of the effects of tobacco in our community, we have been hit very hard by COVID. So it's our position that the ordinance that we spoke about be passed. And without, we want no restrictions. We want a strong ordinance passed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is White Young. I work for the American Heart Association. I urge your support for this measure with council member Foley's memo for an ordinance with a strong enforcement that applies to retailers and does not penalize individuals for purchase, use, or possession. Ending the sale of menthol cigarettes and some other flavored tobacco products is an important first step during a respiratory pandemic. However, over, for over here, we've informed councils that the best way to stop fake tobacco from addicting the next generation to nicotine is a policy that ends all flavored tobacco products like Santa Clara County, San Francisco, and Oakland. The products exempted, flavored hookah, loosely tobacco, and cigars are all learning to kids and highly addictive. Hookah is the second most popular flavored tobacco product among California youth. Cities without exemptions still have hookah businesses. They transition to non-nicotine or non-flavored products. It is not too late for the council to be leaders, take a bold step tonight, and remove the exemptions to truly end the sale of all flavored tobacco products in San Jose. Please put public health above.
Hello, city honorable city council. I would just like to speak on a thank you for the cultural exemption for hookah. I don't know what these people keep saying that it's not a traditional thing. I've learned over the past twenty years manufacturing traditional wooden hookah pipes so much about another culture. I've learned the language. I've gone to Juma prayers. Hookah is also not rising, according to some of the speakers who have said it has the second lowest usage of any tobacco category. Also, hookah only comes in flavors. That is traditionally been made in honey and molasses. So a flavor ban is a de facto ban on hookah. Hookah exemptions have been made in California, Massachusetts, Los Angeles, Glendale, Burbank, Encinitas, Napa, West Hollywood, San Diego, Ventura, Culver City, Irvine, and a few more that I probably can't remember. Hookah tobacco cannot be vaped or rolled. It can only be smoked in a traditional water pipe with charcoal. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Hello? Oh, yeah, man. So, yeah, I was letting y'all know though, man, that trying to ban all these menthol cigarettes and flavored cigarettes is not cool because, you know, it's all type of stuff that's causing death out here. And if y'all keep on agreeing with things that everybody want to pass, it's gonna be all type of stuff getting passed. You know, it's almost seven hundred thousand deaths off of eating fast food a year. If y'all banning this menthol ban, and I think that what's next, everything next. So I don't think y'all, I think y'all should think real hard about what y'all talking about. And what y'all just trying to pass because I don't think it's real cool for us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pranav Madhita. First, I would like to thank you for considering this important issue. The leading cause of preventable death in America is caused by candy and food-flavored tobacco products. Flavors drastically increase the use of tobacco among youth and increases the risk of addiction. I urge the council to prioritize public health over tobacco industry profit and amend the sale of all flavored products, flavored tobacco products without exemptions. That's not make San Jose the go-to place for flavors. I speak up on this issue simply to ensure the safe health of the people in my community and to prevent people from living a life filled with struggles. I hope to, I hope to prevent youth from walking down a path of regret and hardships carved by tobacco industries using flavored products. Thank you for your commitment to protecting the health of San Jose residents.
Hello, the timer, okay. Hello, my name is Myra Batista. I'm testifying on behalf of NATO, the National Association of Tobacco Outlets, in which we represent retailers. I'm testified to oppose the current ban on flavored tobacco and products. There's no actual basis facts in prior precedents that believes that this ordinance would be a benefit to public health or to reduce youth vaping. It's just likely to cause a negative outcome. In the past ban, there has been failures in both Massachusetts and in San Francisco where the result has increased in youth smoking. NATO submitted a letter and included three studies that show that banning flavored tobacco has actually increased youth. The three independent studies are University of Memphis and a public health from June of two thousand twenty-two. The second one is actually a study from Yale with the public health studies from May of two thousand twenty-one. The third point I want to bring is that if you do decide to do this ordinance, please give them more time. The retailers need more time for leases and for.
Hello. My name is Vera Tran and I am a resident of District Seven in San Jose. As a resident living in San Jose all my life, I have seen and experienced the negative effects of the tobacco industry as they market themselves to young smokers. My brother, my younger brother at the age of fourteen has seen his classmates selling vape drills to each other after school. This does not feel right to me. As a community, we must look out for the young and protect them from the future health problems. The San Jose community needs and wants will not be fulfilled if the transference clause stays, given that the clause continues to allow tobacco retailers to keep their businesses dangerously close to the youth. I would like for the city of San Jose to join other jurisdictions who have taken the lead to protect the youth. I urge council to adopt the ordinance and close its loopholes with no exemptions. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Blair Beekman. I hope you can hear me okay. To simply offer a thank you for this item, I thank you that, you know, for the care, there is obvious care of city government to work on this issue. I hope maybe there can be certain exemptions for possibly for people who are trying to honestly give up smoking. The e-cigarette can be a very good alternative for that. This item was on the city council agendas back in September two thousand nineteen. It was a very interesting meeting with many people there. You could, if you want to re-listen to it, it can give you a sense of where people were at at that time. They were addressing issues about COVID and, and there was some sort of weird disease that was happening at that time that should be noted and it's an interesting reference point. Good luck how you work on this issue. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lorraine and I just want to say this is water suppression. How are you, the council, going to take our rights away ahead of the November twenty-two referendum? The people have a right to decide banning flavor of menthol. Menthol cigarettes will cause unintended consequences. Don't ban it. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me? Yeah, with this ban, I just don't think that's the right thing to do because people are still going to buy under the black market. And people are going up and they should be able to do whatever they want to do. They smoke whatever they want to smoke. They eat whatever they want to eat. Not the government telling us what to do every single thing, you know? Like, everybody say, your body is your choice. Don't put people, mandating people what to do and come to your house and mandate this, mandate that, you know, that is not right. There's not a freedom at all. This is a free country. So let people do whatever people want to do. But again, the retail need to be responsible not to sell to a young kid, period. That's it. Whoever was selling it.
Thank you. We're going to take our dinner break at this time. Why don't we return at ten minutes after seven and we'll resume the evening calendar. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I should mention that public, public comment is now closed. So public comment is closed. We'll resume with council discussion at seven ten. Thank you, everybody.